Welcome to our City Council Study Session. Today's date is November 12, 2025. The time is 6:00 P.M. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The City of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. Now I ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Clerk will now perform Roll Call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hozzi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Present.
Councilmember Pollock.
Present.
Councilmember Lampier.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the City Clerk, Patrick Brown, the City Administrator, Carrie Fisk, the City Attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the Public Works Director. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking.
Derek Hanson to reserve the right to talk about the discussion.
No one else has come forward, so we shall continue. Item 5A, Woodsonia Good Life District Review and Discussion. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to introduce this this evening and will turn it over to Woodsonia for their presentation, but all of you do have the memo that was written that goes with this. There are several things that staff is hoping to get from council for negotiation purposes to help us know what lanes we are supposed to operate within because, as all of you know, this is a new process for the State of Nebraska. There are five Good Life districts that have been approved. All of them have some significantly different parameters in ours. One of the key functions or key factors is that the City of Grand Island is the primary owner of the property that is most likely to be developed. So as council members, you are operating not just as council deciding how Good Life District funds are to be spent, but also as the owner of the property, making sure that the property is used to the best interest of the members of the public and of the citizens of Grand Island. The other Good Life districts across the state are pretty much in either private ownership or Bellevue is doing a city project. It complicates things a little bit and as staff, we really need some guidance from council to set those policy perimeters. How do we negotiate this? But in order for you to do that, you need to see the application and what is out there. We were limited in the application and making it public by the ordinance and by state law. We had to go through a number of steps and get to the point where, in this case, Woodsonia has released their application to council and that's where we're at this evening. So what we're looking for from you is percentage of non-revenue-producing funds that can be dedicated to the project. The state says up to 20% of Good Life District funds can go toward non-revenue-producing things. Something the city is building or something that is built specifically for the city is not considered in those non-revenue-producing funds, even if that's streets or sewer or water that the city owns the property that they're under, they're being developed for the city for this development. Those are exempted from those non-revenue-producing funds. Something like building housing would not be exempted from the non-revenue-producing housing, revenue-producing funds. We know that there are going to be issues as we move forward with the soccer fields and timing of soccer fields. We just need to make sure that the existing soccer fields are not disturbed until there are replacement fields in place. Realistically, that's probably two or three years from now before that part moves forward. There's a lot of work that needs to be done between now and that happening. The sports complex needs to be part of this. Good Life District's funds can be used to do that. There is an issue with an existing fiber optic line. We will be bringing to council next week at the meeting on the 18th, a contract with an agreement for relocation with AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is the responsible party for that line and we'll be bringing that forward. They're the only ones that can touch it, so we can't negotiate this. They're going to tell us what it's going to cost. We're looking at about half a million dollars to move that line, but we can't go plow any further depth than plow-deep in the easement for that line. The lake expansion crosses that line, so we have to move that line. We will get started on that as soon as possible. The Aquatics Center is budgeted in here at $15 million. There is debate as to whether $15 million will build the kind of aquatics center that the City of Grand Island is looking for. That needs to be a decision that council makes and gives input on. Public infrastructure will have to be extended throughout the site. There are proposals for that. Those are things that will be decided later, but so any decisions that are made tonight, next week, two weeks from now, there will be more decisions on this over and over and over again as we continue moving down this road. So don't think that we're going to decide everything all at once. We just need to get a direction to move forward. The, um, Woodsonia has engaged Olsons to do a traffic study. That is one of the things that Public Works has said needs to be done, so they are working on that. That is part of those things that need to be done in the future, but they're actually getting things, getting things moving with that. Woodsonia is requesting that we do a one-time transfer of property to be developed. I think that is something we need to know from council. Do you want to do it one, all at one time? Do you want to do it in phases? How do you want to do this? There may be some things with the, uh, non-revenue-generating funds that if the city owns the property and Woodsonia or whoever is developing, streets, sewer, water, those kinds of things that are generally non-revenue-producing, but they're being done on city property for the city's benefit, we're exempted from the non-revenue present, non-revenue-producing, whereas if Woodsonia, we give the property to Woodsonia and they give us back the streets, they may or may not be. So there are some things that we still need to figure out there and I don't have answers for that tonight. And then any issues with ongoing maintenance and capital improvements? How do we pay for those? Woodsonia is going to show that they think that this will be a revenue-producing, the transformational projects will be revenue-producing and will cover those costs. I don't know that, we'll let you decide what you think of what Woodsonia presents. But with that, I will turn it over to Woodsonia. I've given you an outline of the things that we're hoping to get from you that will help us negotiate this. Ideally, we were hoping to have this next week. That means it needs to be done tomorrow. I don't think that's going to happen, that we'll have an MOU fully, fully negotiated tomorrow. We've got a basis of one. I think it'll probably be the December 2nd meeting where that comes forward, but next week you will have a decision to make on the fiber line and AT&amp;T and getting some things happening and rolling out there as soon as possible.
Turn it over to you.
Thanks Chad. Drew Snyder, Mitch Holman with Woodsonia. I think before I start, I really have two thank-yous. First off, we had just come away from Conestoga, the Conestoga Marketplace. I just want to say thank you to the city. I don't know if everybody's been over to the new target, but that project has really turned out phenomenally well and we couldn't be more happy with the results of how that's turned out. And the city was a huge part of that through the public-private partnership, so just a big thank you to you guys for the support that you gave us in that project and everyone involved, city staff, Olson, everyone, so been really, really proud. That's been a project that has been, I know, kind of near and dear to our hearts, so just want to thank the city for that. And then the second thank you is for city staff on this Good Life District. This thing has been going on for a long time and everyone's been very patient. There's been a lot of changes between the state legislature and just everything that's happening and so just want to say thanks for everyone for your patience. We're excited, you know, we've, we've been wanting to get to this point for a long time, so we're really excited to have the opportunity to take you through what we submitted to the city, answer questions. I think Chad brought up some great points of things we definitely want to talk about and, and we can hopefully resolve and move this, move this project forward. So just want to start by saying those things. We submitted an application. We thought the most appropriate thing to do would be to take council, so we, we put together an executive summary. I don't know if everybody had a chance to go through this, but I'll go ahead and start and then turn it over to Mitch to talk a little bit about just the project itself, some of the phases, things of that nature, but we thought it'd be easiest to just walk everyone through instead of the application itself, which is probably over a thousand pages, to try to get this into an executive summary format. So, um, as you can see here, this is kind of an overview. There's the plan. So as everyone knows, this would be the land, the city-owned land north of the railroad line there on the north end of town. We intend to call the project Veterans Village. This would be a true mixed-use development. It would have mixed-use component to it, sports complex, aquatics, housing, both single-family for sale, multi-family for rent, Eagle Scout Lake expansion, so lots of different components to the project that we're going to walk everybody through tonight. But you can see a site plan. Hopefully, if people can't see this, I'm happy to move these easels around, so just please let me know. The other thing I would say, I suspect there'll be a lot of questions tonight. I think for us, it would be most helpful if we got all the way through the presentation, if you'll allow us to get all the way through the presentation. We brought some of our consultants here as well, so they can talk a little bit about the Aquatics Center, the Sports Complex. Let's let those folks get through what they want to present and then at the end, open it up to questions, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, so I'm going to dive in. Here's really what we want to cover on the executive summary. Thought it would be helpful to touch base on sort of the key dates, where we've been, things we've covered, the overall project overview. I'll let Mitch talk us through that. Project phasing, there's been discussions about the phasing of the projects, so we'd like to cover that. Then we're going to turn it over to our consultants on the Sports Complex, the Aquatics Center. We'll dive into the financing, some of the public financing requests, the use of Good Life funding, use of TIF dollars, things of that nature. I think a lot of our open item or open discussion points are similar to what Chad just brought up, so we'd like to walk through those, sort of give council some of our logic on why we, we asked for certain things the way we did. Next stage documents, timing, and then really open it up to questions. So that's how we'd like to conduct and talk through this executive summary. So first off, just key dates. Can everybody see this? I can zoom in here a little bit if I need to. So if you remember, we started this, uh, it was roughly two years ago. It was at the tail end of 2023. I can't remember, I think most of everyone was on the council, but we came before the council asking for your support to get our application into the State of Nebraska. Good Life districts were, were considered. Gretna was sort of the poster child for how we were going to do this. You guys had supported us in the Conestoga project and we thought it'd be very beneficial to bring a second large project like this to Grand Island, to really help bolster tourism and, and seeing Conestoga thrive as a mixed-use center. So we put in the application, council was supportive. The application went in December 19th, 2023. We were approved June of 2024 through the State of Nebraska. Then if you, if everyone recalls, we went through the voter approval of the Good Life District program. That was August 13th of 2024 and then the City Council adopted the Economic Development Program around the Good Life District in September 15th of 2024. So a couple other key dates. We submitted our original application, November 4th of 2024. And then if you, if everyone remembers, the State of Nebraska did the Good Life, the Good Life Amendment in June of 2024, which affected some of our funding a little bit, which is one thing, obviously, as we all know, we've got the state legislature coming up here in a few months and I think there's a good opportunity that Good Life districts will be discussed as well again. So we submitted our updated Good Life District application. So this, the third bullet point from the bottom here, this would be our Good Life District application to the City of Grand Island. That was on August 15th and then obviously we have our study session tonight, which the intent of the study session is to really cover our application and what we've submitted. And then as Chad mentioned, hopefully we're on the November 18th meeting to discuss an MOU, to talk about how to move this project forward. So these are the key dates. With that, I will turn it over to Mitch to talk about the project overview. I'm, I'm happy to walk by the site plan and point out where certain things are as Mitch is talking about these.
Hi. It's good to see you guys all again. So it's, it's, we talk about this every time, it's just fun to have familiar faces, right? We know most of you now for going on four years, so hopefully we build some trust. This is a really big project, as Drew mentioned, but really what we want to do, or at least I want to do right now, is give an overview of the whole project and then talk through the phases and then from there, we'll get more granular, right, on each of those. So if you do, as Drew mentioned, I'd like to save as many questions as we can till the end so we can get through it. If there's something, you know, quick clarification, just ask it and interrupt me, that's fine. So the overall project, kind of our, our position has been, there's no single element of this project in and of itself that's transformational, right? But what is, I think, transformational to the state and Grand Island is the project in and of itself, which if we do deliver on this, should be a $600 million project. So the whole project is one anchored by a new-to-market indoor/outdoor sports complex. The idea from that, from our perspective, came about three years ago when we were working through the mall where I, I think we had had some discussions with, with one of the groups that was trying to get a sports complex off the ground. It's actually how we met, Norm, who's here tonight and we'll, we'll talk about that. But we had wanted to bring them on the mall, that wasn't feasible, ended up moving forward with the mall project, but did kind of have this looming desire to see a sports complex in Grand Island. Fortunately, the Good Life District legislation kind of provided us an avenue to do that and that's where the Veterans Village idea came. So the overall project is going to be anchored by an indoor/outdoor sports complex. Drew, if you want to point to it, it's positioned right kind of there on the south side of the, of the site. In addition to that, we really think this plays off well with the existing ball fields that are on the north and then we are going to relocate the existing soccer fields kind of into that southeast corner of the site, which is a great use because most of that's floodplain and not otherwise buildable. So as Chad mentioned, our intent is to make sure those are there, established. We don't want to disrupt the soccer folks, we know those are used regularly, but we would relocate those into the south piece of it. The indoor sports complex is really geared around a tournament-focused facility. That's a key consideration for the state, right? But on the other end of that, and Norm can get much more into the details, is this thing's going to be there throughout the week, right? It's not going to have a tournament there every day, so we think this is going to have huge community benefit as well. So the indoor facility will accommodate 16 volleyball, eight basketball, and then the courts are multipurpose, so those could be turned over to pickleball, dance, cheer, gymnastics, wrestling, the assortment. It'll also have an indoor concessions in meeting rooms and then the parking facilities, which you can kind of see positioned around it. The second piece is the outdoor components, so this would be a all-turf, multi-sport field. And again, Norm will get more into the details on this, but when we talk multi-sport field, this will be able to accommodate at one time, four full-size baseball fields, collegiate, four full-size softball fields. I think we have four full-size football fields and then I think it's six full-size soccer fields. So that'll all be accommodated within that big rectangular box that you see kind of on the south side of the site. In addition to that, we do have the, an area designated for the City Aquatics Center, which is that blue rectangle, just, actually just the other side of that, drew the rectangular piece. There's been a lot of discussion and this is why we do have, hopefully, a couple folks here that are really educated on the Aquatics Center, of, of what does this need to include? I don't think there's consensus on that, right? I think if we ask each of you, we might get a different response, but I do think the consensus in the community is you want to see an aquatic center. We think that's an important piece too. So what we've, what we've relayed to staff is let's designate, I think, a significant amount of funding for that. We can talk about what that all includes, but we do have placement for that. So what we would do is we'd put in all the horizontal infrastructure, we'd put in all the primary parking fields, and then what the city ultimately desires to do with that aquatic center, they can desire to do, but there is a space designed for that. The other piece is the Eagle Scout Lake expansion. We think this is really a key piece of the overall site. So the existing Eagle Scout Lake is hatched, as you can see kind of up in that upper corner. We think this is a really great opportunity to enhance this. It's, it's fine today, but I think we can really bolster that with walking trails, landscaping, and the other key piece we want to do is dredge it quite a bit deeper so that it stays wet throughout the year. So ultimately, this would be a 20-acre expansion. It would go across the site. As Chad mentioned, we do need to relocate that fiber line. If this is going to be feasible, we do think that's possible, but this would stretch all the way across the site and really serve as more of an amenity space for all the components of the project. So in addition to that, we'd have two miles of walking trails throughout. I think we've got two different pedestrian bridges and fishing piers, but would really kind of anchor the overall development. The other piece that we've talked about, which you can see positioned just north of the red is a city amphitheater. We think there's a great opportunity to bring an amphitheater in Grand Island, there's not one today, but we would position that on the south side to kind of anchor that mixed-use area right there. I should have said this too at the start, what was really helpful, what we found really helpful about six months ago was our, our Confluence design meetings. So the original plan, you know, we did put some thought into it. I think Jeff Pollock was the one that actually designed most of the site, which, that's kind of crazy, but we did have Confluence come in and redesign some certain elements of this, which we incorporated all of those into our overall site plan. So the site plan that you see today does follow the master plan that Confluence came up with. In addition to that, we've got 72 acres of mixed-use area. That's predominantly made up of the area in red and then pink and then green and yellow. So if you point to it, we got, yeah, there you go. So we got the area in red on the south, red on the north, the pink is additional mixed-use and then we've got more kind of traditional commercial up along the airport front edge. Exactly. Lastly is the multi-family and single-family, which we'll talk about as, as kind of a key anchor to the site. Ultimately, if we're going to be able to bring businesses up here, whether it's a restaurant, a hotel, a sports complex, there needs to be some residential density. The example that we continue to use is kind of the Prairie Commons, where a lot of the businesses that you're seeing move into that district now, they came after the residential came there. That's a key piece of activating this area. It is, I mean, it's no secret, this is up on the north end of Grand Island. If we're going to be able to activate this in the way that we really want to, residential is a key, key component of that. But all together, it's 1,500 multi-family units that's spread out between the area in orange and yellow, and then we've got about 300 single-family units, which is green I think the next kind of key, key piece we want to walk through, which will take you through some of these elevations. Yeah, why don't you pull those up?
So the overall imagery, what you're seeing here would be looking south. So you can see the city amphitheater with kind of the purple awning. Here, I'll pull up the actual image here first. There you go. So this would be looking south. You can see the sports complex positioned here, the multi-sport positioned here, you got your existing ball fields, and then you got the relocated soccer fields. So this would be a shot of the, the hotel, the restaurant, the amphitheater, and then we'd hope to bring in a couple more hotels in future phases as part of this development. But hopefully this gives a feel of what we'd like Eagle Scout Lake to feel like as you actually walk around it, which is very walkable and more of a neighborhood type element. The sports complex is positioned, we've got an image right there in kind of the floor, but this was what we'd like the exterior design to look like. Again, this would be 100,000 square foot indoor facility. We would do a raised mezzanine seating area to bring a lot of that viewing up top. Norm can talk about the efficiency on that, but hopefully this gives a flavor of what this facility would ultimately look like. Here's another shot of the interior. There's a shot continuing to look south, but on the other side, one of the, which we could talk about, one of the key pieces of our initial Phase 1 would be a 15,000 square foot event center, which this is that facility. We think that would really benefit from the views of Eagle Scout Lake. So let me talk about this map first and then we can talk about the specific elements. So the, there you go. So part of the overall, I guess, challenge with this project is conveying, what does this look like, you know, in kind of bite-sized pieces? A $600 million project, this is going to take time to develop, but the initial phase, and when we say initial phase, we talk about the initial kind of two to three years of the project. The first piece of it would be masquerading the site, which the entire site would get graded. So we'd expand Eagle Scout Lake, we'd pull all that material out, and then the entire site gets raised about a foot. That's every single piece of the site, which is kind of critical to activating it. The site sits pretty low. So we'd masquerade the entire site and then the areas that you see colorized on this plan would be the various vertical components that would be activated in Phase 1. So that includes the indoor sports complex, which is down here, the all-turf, multi-sport field, which is here, the relocated soccer fields, which are here, the Aquatics Center. Phase 1 would also include one hotel, one restaurant, and the amphitheater, so all this area would be complete. We've got the expansion of
We've got the expansion of Eagle Scout Lake. We do have the event center that we would plan to position on the north end, and then the initial 250 multifamily units would be positioned on the north end as well. And the single-family is on the, the west end of the site. So these future phases, I would consider these all to be pad-ready, where once we see demand, we could go vertical on those, but the common infrastructure would be complete. So the initial spine road connecting Airport Road, all the way through the site, connecting it to Broadwell would be complete. The primary artillery streets, which will provide connectivity through the balance of the site, would be complete. But what areas would be weighted until future phases would be these interior streets you can kind of see faded in the future phases.
Mr. Nickerson? Since we're talking about Phase One, I wanted to ask you, you talked about elevating everything a foot. How does that timing tie into use of current soccer fields versus what you have to do? Do we lose a season? Does everything work out okay timing-wise, or how's that?
No, I mean, ultimately, we're talking about a smaller area, Mitch. Soccer fields sit about there. So I think we'd be pulling a lot of the material over here. We'd obviously come up with a phased grading plan that has this area raised, relocated, fields in, and then we would regrade and ultimately put the Broadwell in right here, Mitch.
Do you see any loss of season, or is it?
I, I think we'd strive not to. I mean, there might be a period of months, right, where we don't have access to it, but since it does front Broadwell, I think we've got a really great shot of not losing access to those fields. This is the phased site plan. Again, those are all the various elements that we would complete at the onset of the project, which we're deeming as kind of the critical pieces to get this project off the ground. And here's a little bit more details on where those various phases are. So again, sports complex. You've got the Phase One commercial. Multifamily housing. The single-family housing. And also together, again, to get a little more granular, this would be 250 multifamily units, 20 single-family units, one new hotel, one new restaurant, one new event center, the indoor and outdoor sports complex, and then the aquatic center, once the city has that designed. I think the next agenda item we have would be Norm Gill.
Norm, as I mentioned, Norm is with Pinnacle Sports Group. We've had the pleasure of meeting Norm, actually through the chief construction folks. Norm's been looking at this market for five years.
Long time. So, so anyway, we found Norm to be a, a great resource. He helped us conduct the market study, so we thought it'd be appropriate to have Norm talk a little bit. I mean, this is his industry, this is what he does day in and day out. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Norm.
Please state your last name.
Norm Gill, G-I-L-L. So Mitch got to show all the pretty pictures, and I get to talk facts and numbers. So again, my name's Norm Gill. I'm with Pinnacle Sports. We are a consulting firm out of Louisville, Kentucky. But more grander than that, I used to own six of these facilities that I ran on a day-to-day basis in six different cities, mainly in the Midwest. Probably closest to here was a couple I had in, in the Twin Cities. So we feel like our experience and understanding of, of various, we've also done probably 800 feasibility market studies across the country. So we've got a broad exposure to different communities, to different aspects of it. We've seen over 30 years this industry change and grow. We also have a very practical, hands-on knowledge of the working day-to-day, real-world elements, not, not national trends, not regional trends, but actual, specific elements as it relates to the financial elements of a, of operating one of these. So we've, we've actually been in this market a couple times. We were here in '22, looking, doing some work with a group that was looking at a public-private partnership, some of you may be aware of. That project was primarily focused on quality-of-life enhancement, with some elements of, of sports tourism. And then earlier this summer, we reevaluate, we relooked at the community to see what had changed, what opportunities there still may be, et cetera, as it related primarily to sports tourism. So those are the two kind of elements that a facility of this nature can satisfy. Sports tourism is a $52 billion-a-year industry now. Just three years ago, it was under 40. So it continues to very rapidly grow across the country, to which facilities are needed to take advantage of that. The, the second, as I mentioned, are quality-of-life assets, facilities that are built that are mainly centered around utili-, utilization by the local community for their citizens, for their athletes, but it's not meant to drive people from out of town to come here. So as we focused on this time around, based upon the funding source, as we were directed or that we were told, sports tourism was a key to that. So we did look, I can go through here, excuse me. I, I believe you all have this. I'm certainly not going to read it to you. You can read the, the gummy details for yourself. But we, we talked to numerous, numerous stakeholders locally and regionally. We talked to some national governing bodies. We talked to some tournament promoters in various sports, all set, trying to get an inclination of what likelihood they would have to come to Grand Island. From a sports tourism standpoint, Grand Island has some very great assets. It is centrally located to a number of major markets. In fact, the great analytical computer software we have says that in the, what we refer to as the travel donut, which is a one-to-five-hour radius around your market, one, an hour to five hours, the one hour being critical, two, because within one hour, people go home. They don't spend the night, and that doesn't help with the socio-, or with the economic impact. So in a one-to-five-hour donut around Grand Island, there's nearly 8 million people. That's a good-sized opportunity to come here. You have obviously major markets, primarily to the east and, and southeast, all of which have easy access to I-80. You also have numerous hotel accommodations, something that we find in a lot of communities, even when they come upon funds like this and want to do something like this, it's not going to be beneficial to their community because they don't have enough hotels, or they don't have enough eateries. And so you certainly have that infrastructure to, to support that. So as, as we looked at our study, we talked to these people, tourism being the key to that, we looked at both indoor and outdoor opportunities that could serve that, that opportunity for people to come to town. What we know from our experience is that the primary driver of that are assets that involve hardcore. So basketball, volleyball, futsal, I have to mention pickleball, because everybody wants to mention pickleball today, mat sports, wrestling, cheerleading, dance, gymnastics, and then a great deal of diversity, and we'll show you the, the floor plan that, and it's in your packet, but that we have come up with, that also gives tremendous flexibility to offer potential for small expos, for trade shows. Not massive, but boutique, 100-vendor, 120-vendor products that are looking for a space of reasonable value. These facilities, most of the facilities we've built, do accommodate shows of this nature, and it takes very little effort to do so. The basic infrastructure is already all there. So what we have proposed from an indoor standpoint, as Mitch mentioned, I'll go, I'll come back to this. Now I got to get fancy. So we've proposed approximately just north of 100,000-square-foot facility that is primarily hardcore. Eight basketball, 16 volleyball, I think I did count, you could put 32 wrestling mats in this space. We've laid this out and designed it in such a way that it is tournament-friendly. A number of facilities that you all may have been in, if you have children in sports, come somewhat come into be, being a sardine can for tournaments. They weren't designed for the kind of bodies that you would have in here. Literally, if we were to hold a 16-court volleyball tournament at any given time, you have 640 athletes in there. And on average, there's 1.5 spectators per athlete, so that's another nearly 1,000. So you have, you know, 1,600, 1,700 people in this building at one time. And so creating a venue where that is comfortable is paramount to people wanting to come back to a facility and enjoy it, not be felt, felt like it was built for something else, and now you're doing, you're doing tournaments. You know, the layout, not to get overly specific, but, you know, has a, has an entry coming in one way. We have, which we find very important as it relates to safety and risk management, we have the ability to have concessions, we have plenty of gathering space downstairs, the court space is divided left and right, which also gives you the opportunity to be flexible. This layout would allow you to run a four-court basketball tournament while still running an eight-court volleyball tournament, or a mat sports event along with a small expo. So this layout gives you tremendous flexibility to ebb and flow with the opportunities that come in, in a community. I know early on, we spoke with your, your CDB, and they seemed anxious to help to program this with that kind of flexibility. And as mentioned by Mitch, we have taken advantage of the area, the real estate that is not over the courts, and, and put a mezzanine level there. That also helps to spread out this crowd that could be there, and also gives some very advantageous viewing for the sports below. So this has been our recommendation for the indoor. On an outdoor standpoint, and I apologize, I did notice today that this did not come out graphically as well as we had liked, but this, the outdoor component is approximately 550,000 square feet of synthetic turf. It will be able to accommodate four collegiate baseball fields. And again, I see that the graphics did not come out as clear as we would have liked. That can be converted then into four softball or Little League fields. When baseball and softball probably five, six years ago accepted synthetic turf infields as an okay product collegiately, nationally, that's a game changer. It'll, it meant that we can put in a facility that now is almost weatherproof, lightning is probably, and obviously, if you have a Kentucky phrase here, a gully washer, then, you know, you would have a challenge. But all in all, the utilization is much more guaranteed, which promoters like, governing bodies like. You can start earlier, you can go later because you don't have to worry about the, the natural product. This configuration, again, also allows us to convert into six rectangle sports, whether it's soccer, whether it's lacrosse, whether it's football. And then further to that, they could be divided even more into U-12 size, U-12 and undersized fields for 12, eight, tens and eights. This would be adjacent to the, to the indoor to allow for some sharing of resources, food service, restrooms, et cetera. So I know one question that has been burning in those of you that love, okay, this is going to be way too small. So I think this is in your packet, so we don't need to go, try to go through line by line, but I'm sure at some point, there will be questions towards this. We took the approach on this facility of a ramp-up. It's not going to be golden on day one. Our, our financial model does show a deficit in year one, which we've taken care of in the, the capital startup budget. But we do believe that this facility, if managed well, and by that, I will emphasize that we believe the best management for this would be securing an outside professional firm to run it. And by the way, that's not us. This is not self-serving. But the management professional firms that are out there can focus on the, the, their attention on the economic impact initiative here. They know those promoters, they know those governing bodies, and they have direct pipelines to try to persuade them, I'm not going to say it's a guarantee, to come to Grand Island and bring their, bring their tournaments, et cetera. We have been, what I feel is, very conservative in the, in the revenue. We've not booked this every weekend, we've not booked this 52 weeks a year, et cetera. We've also been realistic to the costs. This is something we feel we have an inside knowledge of because of our background. We have made a few assumptions. The biggest of this that makes this project totally, not totally unique, but very, very unique, would be that this will not carry any debt service, nor will the community carry a debt service in another stack somewhere. Because we do have communities that go and float a bond and build it, and guess, hey, guess what? It's cash-flowing positive, but nobody takes the 3%, 4% whatever bond debt service and applies it to this P and L. So having that not be anywhere, or even a contingent liability in the balance sheet of this community, we think is very unique. Obviously, if it's municipally owned, there's no property tax. That makes it very different than anybody in the poor, evil, capital, privately-owned world that has those expenses. We have assumed a few shared services. We, since it's owned by the municipality, we have assumed that probably the, the city's overall umbrella insurance would cover this as well. We've assumed that the public works would probably do some snow plowing and some lawn, lawn maintenance. But we've, everything else we've assessed as a, as a direct cost to the facility, and we do feel that there's the opportunity, if run professionally, for this to cash-flow positive by the sustainable year. Happy to answer questions when, after the aquatics guys.
Thanks, Norm. I'll slide down to our next. If you guys want to step up, I believe, it's on the aquatic side. Shrink this down a little bit. If you guys want to introduce yourselves, I'm going to get you to the spot on the presentation. Go ahead, guys.
Hello, everyone. I'm R. Chassler. I'm with Health Fitness Corporation. We're a company that operates centers such as this. We've been in business for 50 years. It's our 50-year anniversary this year. Today, we manage several hundred of these centers, aquatics, fitness, recreation, wellness. The three markets we mainly work within are community sectors such as yours, corporations, as well as higher education facilities.
Good evening. I'm Ben Brandstetter, president of Brandstetter Carroll. We're a regional architecture and engineering firm, and one of our main focuses is in the recreation space and in the aquatic space. And Charlie Schneider is here with our firm tonight. He's our lead aquatic engineer. And so we're, our goal tonight is to go through and kind of answer the question of what would make sense for the aquatic and fitness component for this project as it relates to an indoor facility.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
Yeah, it's Brandstetter, B-R-A-N-D-S-T-E-T-T-E-R.
Name again?
Charlie Schneider. So our goal, our goal this evening is to review, an overview of aquatic amenities, look at industry trends, give an overview of the fitness give an overview of the fitness center amenities. We have developed a, a concept plan based upon a targeted budget for what the funding would be available for this. Give a projection of the costs for the facilities. Arch will talk about a operating model, and then give you an overview, a little bit about, about what we do. But we want to focus mainly on your all's projects and your all's needs this evening. So, Charlie?
Sure. So, jump right into the aquatics. Aquatics mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and there are a lot of different routes you can go with this. There's a lot of different types of facilities out there. Going from the, you know, the dramatic, I don't know if you've seen Epic Waters down in Dallas with the water park, to, you know, training facilities for Olympic swimmers. But we're focusing on what we think is best for this community, and what we see a lot municipally ran and owned and operated facilities. So some of the components we look for in these aquatic centers, I think the key one is the middle one, the flexible layout of the pool. The ability to offer multiple programming in the same body of water. So you're getting multiple uses out of the same, same water at different points during the time. You never want to, if you're just doing one thing all the time, then it's really, it's not, it doesn't offer the flexibility and options that, that are for successful operations. Sustainable, you know, for me, that really means the air quality, the water quality, and the safety of the facility, that it's designed and built to a way that's, it's comfortable and inviting for the people to come in. And of course, the interactive and leisure portions of it, getting the families involved. It's not just there to, to train athletes, like so much of this other facilities are. It's there to bring the family to be together and spend some time at the facility. So again, family-friendly design is important. A recreational pool along with, with the lap pool, combining those two elements together to where you have both the recreation activity and the exercise activity is very important. Because having those lap lanes, a lot of people still like to swim a lot, but those lap lanes don't, are not going to be used all day, all the time. So being able to do other things like aqua aerobics and swim lessons inside the facility is very important. And we'll talk a little bit more about programming later. And then the support facilities around it, everything to do with the locker rooms and the other amenities to go with it. Standalone aquatic centers are, are not very common, and having all the other components of a recreation facility there, together with the aquatics, is very important.
So just to take a quick pause to tell you a little bit, you know, I've worked with Norm on several projects as we look at, all of them have been community-facing. And we've worked with BCI, Branstadter Carroll, most recently on several community-facing projects in Ohio that had aquatics as a component as well. And like I told you a couple of minutes ago, we work in the community, the corporate, and the higher ed. For example, we run all the rec centers at Harvard. We just opened the new center for Walmart at their head, New World Headquarters in Bentonville. And we probably have over 20, 15 to 20 community-based. We have a listing in here on one of the last slides, I believe, of probably 10 or 12 that I think are very similar in concept and scope of what we understand that you want to do. What we were tasked with and what we're going to show you today, again, I can't disclaim or preface enough that it's written in pencil and it's a block of clay. We were asked by our, our associates here to look at how, where it sits within the current master plan, what, what makeup is it, and then also the budget that we would show you, what you could get within that, that budget realm. But one of the key things when we look at community-facing, family-oriented centers, we don't run one that's just one thing, either wet or dry programming. Where we've seen the most success that our community clients have got is there, if there's a level of wet and dry programming within the program scope, that's where we're seeing the greatest return for the community, the greatest satisfaction within, you know, the residents of those areas. So when we're showing you these numbers, as Ben said, we're family aquatic and fitness are the categories that we put in here. So Charlie went over the, what I call the wet amenities, the aquatic amenities. But just to touch real quick, it's very similar makeup to the, the fitness center concept. Today's fitness centers, you have open layouts, a lot of functional training. There's a lot of technology integration from the deck on the treadmill to the automation of the member management systems. And then there's dedicated training zones from a fitness perspective. Common features for the dry-based fitness areas, obviously, you have an exercise equipment floor, recovery space, stretching zones. There's also multiple group classrooms today where you can do spin, or yoga, or Tai Chi, things like that. And then the amenities outside the fitness components, the plan that, that Ben's going to show you in a couple of minutes, they're shared. So we don't have two sets of locker rooms and administrative space and entry ways. So all of these support amenity areas would be shared, obviously, with the facility. So I'm going to hand it over to Ben. He's going to talk to you about how we appropriated the space and then the design.
Yeah, thanks, Arch. You know, the, I guess the problem we were asked to solve for this, for this evening's discussion was a little bit unique in terms of providing a budget and the set of, kind of what, what can we put in that box, so to speak. So we looked at, and we used our, our experience in, in all of our previous projects to look at what are, what are the value propositions? What are the elements that need to be included in a, in a project such as this? And so we essentially added all that up, all the things that we've talked about, including the indoor water, the, the support spaces, the exercise equipment area, and came up with a program that's about a 27,000 square foot project, 27,000 square foot building. And I asked one of our architects to kind of tell, show, give me a block diagram of what that could look like. And that's what the image is on the, on the left over here, essentially showing the aquatics and the mechanical space. It's being that central focus, and then wrapping, wrapping that around with the sport and fitness areas. And fortunately, we took that also, we took that a little bit to the next level and came up with a little bit more of a concept plan so to try to give you all something that you can touch and feel and provide some perspective on what that would, what that would look like. So we oriented this to, to the site, so north is up. And so you, you would come in off of a central entry lobby area, and then off to the side, you'd have child watch capabilities to, to the right. To the left, you would walk in, you'd have a couple of different classroom spaces that, that group classes could be in. Those would also be multipurpose areas if they want to, you know, move the, move the equipment out either, you know, to the side. But more than just those two, the, the cycle classes. And then as you kind of get into the heart of, the heart of the facility, the, the locker room, family changing areas are integral to that. And really, that, what that, the location of that is, allows is to serve both the, the exercise equipment area and the indoor aquatics area. Charlie alluded to air quality inside, in, in an indoor facility, indoor water facility. And we can't express that enough of how important that is. The industry has learned a ton in the last 10, 10 to 20 years. We attend conferences on a regular basis where we, to, to make sure that we stay on top of those trends. But indoor water quality adds a lot to the quality of the experience of the, of the user. That's why the, the mechanical space probably seems a little bit big for a facility this size, but it's really needed. We, we're showing, you know, three, three lap lanes, additional open swim areas, two water slides, and all of that, actually, I'm sorry, one, one main water slide. But you know, all that really would be, we would want to tailor that to the needs and the wants of your all's community. This is, I don't always like coming with concept plans in, in something like this because it's, this is our guess as to what you all need, whereas we really would want to have a conversation about, okay, what are the needs of the community? What, and, and looking at that. But what this does is, is it provides that direct access from the locker rooms, family changing areas, straight onto the, onto the pool deck, and provides easy access over into the exercise equipment area, while also allowing for some staff workspaces and check-ins, and, and really provide an open, you know, an open environment. When you walk in, you, you've got visual eyeballs on all the things that you're looking for. Because a lot of times when you come into something, everybody looks up, okay, where am I going? We want to be, we want that to be very intuitive. So as we get into the cost projections, as I said, we're looking at about a 27,000 square foot facility. And we based, we, we kind of, we tested that both ways, looking forward and backwards in terms of the, of the, of the overall building program and the scope. And we've got a high level of confidence that that, that plan that you saw a couple of slides ago could be built for $15 million. And that's based upon the recent experiences that, that we've seen in, in the markets that we serve. So Arch, I'm going to turn it back over to you and look at the operating cost aspect of this.
So again, you'll probably hear this from me a couple of times, written in pencil, it's a block of clay. So as I said, we operate several hundred of these. So again, as Ben just mentioned, we're, we're coming at you with a concept, one-sided concept. But again, tasked with the 15 million, you know, in projected budget for the actual physical plant, we as operators were tasked with, well, what could that look like operationally? And again, the, the numbers I'm giving you in this scope, we're not just throwing darts on the wall. I'm looking at all of our other community-based centers of similar size, similar makeup, and what are they offering? So as you can see in this slide here, if you look to the far right, I don't expect you to read the multicolored table because the print's pretty small, but the right gives you kind of a summary. So we're looking at 105 hours a week. And when I look at all of our community-based centers, that's exactly the average that, the hours per week that the centers open. So that's typically like a Monday through Thursday, 5:00 in the morning till 10:00. Fridays, we usually close, open at 5:00, close at 9:00. And then on Saturdays and Sundays, we open between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. and close maybe at, at 8:00 p.m. So it averages around 105 hours, seven days a week. The programming that we have in this projection here, this draft projection, obviously, it includes aquatics, and I'll go over those in a slide, fitness services, the general member services, and then facility oversight. And I didn't say a couple of minutes ago, one of the things that we found key, and I think our oldest community-based account that we have right now, it's, we've had it for 29 years. So we've had a lot of years to learn what works and what's been successful. And what we've realized is one revenue stream plays off another. So what, way we categorize it is a membership or subscription-based model that's attached to an event-based revenue stream. When you put those two together, they can support each other well over a 12-month period. And what I mean by that is membership into a program and a club, and then the service or event-based revenue are swim lessons, personal training, group classes, things like that. When you have those two combined together, you have a, a good, successful model there. I'm not going to get into a lot of the detail on the core staff, but in general, we have a, what we call a management staff. So that's a general manager, operations manager, and a marketing manager. Like Norm said, we employ a little over 3,000 degree professionals in recreation, aquatics, fitness, wellness. And that's their charge to go out to your market and basically profess and promote, you know, the message that you want us to give to your residents. We have three, what we call business units in this, in that operational tree there. We have the aquatics in the center, obviously, your aquatics manager, your lifeguards. We have the fitness staff, personal trainers, group class instructors. And then we have member services, that's front desk staff, membership sales, things like that, that make up that 20.75 FTEs or a headcount of about 41. So what's, and again, this is a proposed, these are things that we can do in each of the aquatic and the fitness categories. But recreational play, and you can see a lot of those pictures. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of a, a note here that all of these pictures you see here are centers that we manage. So they're operational centers, the staff you see in there are our staff. So obviously, there's recreational playtime, basically for families. Then you have aquatic fitness classes. That's your aerobics, but doing it in, in the, in the pool. And then we have instructional swims. So we have group, and we have private, and then we have age-specific swim types of categories that we can offer to your community residents. And then lifeguard training. All of those people are employed by us, and we make sure that they have the right lifeguard certifications. And then rentals for birthday parties and pool parties and things like that. It's kind of the core menu that we see. And then when you get to the operating model, this is part of the program and service revenue that you see in that line item. For fitness, it's general member services, it's meeting and greeting at the front desk, handing a towel, telling them, you know, when the pool event's going to be on Sunday at noon, what have you. It's facility and program orientations, giving tours of the center, orienting them to all the program offerings and the schedule. We also offer basic fitness assessments to help people understand what their current fitness is before they get in the pool or maybe get on a treadmill. We have a, a big menu of group classes, what we call dry land, obviously, in the group classrooms, and then the aquatic that we offer. Personal and small group training, assisted stretching is a really strong component in the fitness world today. Someone comes in and they work out on a Monday and they're real sore Tuesday and Wednesday. So we've really brought in that whole stretching component as a part of the activity program. And then recovery services as well. So we put together a potential program model, but then we also looked at what the potential could be as far as participation within your community. I'm going to focus on this slide here, really that middle table there. So what we do, we use Cubit to get our household demographic data from any region that we're looking at. So we ordered the demographic data in an eight, 12, and 20-minute radius from the location of where this potential center's going to be. And then we, we apply our experience. So we look at that, and if you look at that middle table, the numbers came out that there's 22,762 households, club-eligible, in that eight, 12, and 20-minute. Then we look at different penetration rates. And our, what we're seeing in our normative data with existing centers, within an eight to 12-minute range, we're seeing around a 30% of those households in that drive time radius would want to participate in this type of club. And then in the 13 to 20-minute, we're seeing around a 15%. So if you do the math, 22,762, it comes out to about 5,900 households is what we're projecting that may want to join a club with these type of amenities that we're showing you today. And then from there, we basically look at it and say, what, what's going to be impacted by the competition, existing centers, Y's, what have you in the area? And then from that, it comes up with a number that we call our steady state. So if you look at that powder blue table at the bottom, we take the 5904, and about 55% we'd say would, would go somewhere else to, to be active. So that's about 3247, and then that leaves us with 2,657 as a projected membership unit. And again, that's based on an assumption that we're promoting to the market a membership-based model for this facility. The table at the bottom shows you what we see as a typical maturity over a five-year timeline for a center like this. So you see the yellow column, that's pre-sale. So we think, we usually start pre-sales maybe four to six, maybe eight weeks before. We can get several hundred memberships, you know, before the center even opens. And then if you look at the, the powder blue column to, in year four, that's what we call our steady state. So we're basically saying that in about four years, in between years three- So we're basically saying that in about four years, in between years three and four, we'll hit that average of 2,657 as far as membership units. I want to make sure I preface that that's a membership account. If I, one account might be me, my wife, and our three kids. And Ben might be single and he's a second accountant, Charlie's a third. So they're accounts, not headcount. So with that, this is a very truncated operating model for you. And it basically just shows the two main revenue categories and member services. And member services enrollment, monthly dues, and visitor passes. Someone might want to come for a week or a weekend and, and try out the club on a visitor perspective. The program service revenue line is everything that I went through in those two slides with aquatic and fitness services that we could offer. That's the projected level of revenue, fee for service revenue, that's the way we call it, that we projected to generate on program services. You can see the revenue grand total there, 1.6 matures to 4.4 by year five. Over three or five years, we're projecting close to 16 million in revenue. Expenses, core staff compensation, that's that 20.7 or so FTEs. The variable supplies and services, that includes an additional labor, that's for personal trainers, group class instructors, that, that fee for service staff. And then pool chemicals, office supplies, utilities, things like that. Account management is, if we were to manage the center for you, that's basically our overhead general administrative services, all of our resources, all of our marketing templates and tools you get access to. And then the management fee is the interest of the partner in, in the operation. So as you can see there, in this, this trends, and by the way, on the plane, I was looking at our current average membership units. And right now, we're at about 2347. So in a year from now, we'll, we'll be at about 2,400. And, and it's, it's, it's tracking with your year three and four. So again, I wanted to preface that we're not just coming up with these numbers as a what-if, we're using our current 15 to 20-some community-based centers and where they're tracking and where we think they'll be in two or three years. And it's married up with what our projections are for you, so. But you can see, on average, it shows about a 10% positive net income over the five years on average by year three. It's at 27%. Our current community-based operations right now are operating at about a 31% recovery. So it's very much in line with what we're doing within our current book of business. This list here, and then I'll be done. I don't, I'm not going to go over every single one of these. These aren't all of our community, but they were, these are community-facing. There are two corporates in there. There's the Walton Family Whole Health and Fitness Center down in Bentonville. That was a great project. We launched it, I think, in February. It's eight acres under roof. It's easier to tell you what it doesn't have and what it does, but it has a lot of aquatics and, and fitness in there. And then the JMBAs, the really nice aquatic center at SC Johnson over in Wisconsin. But everything else on this list, they are community-facing centers that have aquatics, fitness, wellness, recreation components in there as well. All these pictures, again, are actual centers. That picture of the outdoor up in West Hartford for the Cornerstone Aquatic Center, we evolved the relationship to where we also manage their seasonal pools around the city of West Hartford. So I think that's it.
We've got, there's two more slides in here that you guys can take a look at later and just give you a little more background on, on who we are. But we just want to thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight. We'll be, we'll be in the room in case any specific questions come up regarding this topic.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, just some quick background. I knew, Mitch and I knew as the Aquatic Center discussion was advancing, we're certainly not aquatics experts. So we're very thankful that Brandstetter and Health Fitness, Norm Gill actually introduced us to these guys, and they've been just a, just a wealth of knowledge. So we're definitely excited to have them as part of the team. So with that, we'll continue to work through our executive summary. The next part is a breakdown on the request. And this will break down, I can zoom in here a minute. So this breaks it down into, I believe, three phases of funding. And so we can walk you through that. So the categories here, site preparation, Eagle Scout Lake expansion, infrastructure, the sports complex, the aquatic centerpiece, which we just talked about, the phase one mixed-use area, the venue, the restaurant, the hotel, the single-family housing component, the multifamily housing component, and then the associated soft costs. So phase one would be $142 million. There'd be $47 million of private debt and equity that would be coming in, really no use of TIF here, as a lot of this, really the, the housing is the only real piece and the mixed-use that would have any increment. The TIF will be a pay-as-you-go. And then Good Life bond proceeds of $95 million. And so you can see how those, those dollars are allocated. That's over in the right-hand column on the phase one area. So this phase one area matches what's up on that cork board right there. Those are the areas that we would want to activate. Mitch talked about that. Those are, those, all those areas would go as part of the phase one of this project. It's a $600 million project, so we're going to have to take this elephant down in chunks. But this is what we would anticipate doing in phase one. Phase two, you can see would be focused on the mixed-use area, more of the housing component, the single-family housing component, another phase of the multifamily housing component, and then associated soft costs. So that would be $76 million. $39 million of that would be private debt and equity. There'd be 11 million in TIF. And then there's Good Life proceeds of $26 million. We'll talk a little bit more about that here as we continue to work through here. And then really kind of the remaining phase. Phase one and phase two, we think will bring kind of the critical density that's needed. I mean, right now, if you go up here, this thing's on the edge of town. It's very much, there needs to be density up here in order to support any kind of businesses, restaurants, mixed-use. Obviously, aquatics will help, a sports complex will help, but we also need permanent residents. And so, so the, you know, phase one, phase two, hopefully will establish at least a baseline of that. And then those future phases, there'll be additional infrastructure of $40 million. There'll be a phase three mixed-use area, and then the rest of what we would call the single-family area, the rest of the multifamily area, the soft costs. So that would be broken down, private debt and equity would be $330 million. The TIF portion would be $41 million of that. And then the Good Life proceeds would be $9 million of that. So those are the three phases. If there's questions at the end, we can certainly come back to this slide, but this will provide the breakdown of what we had asked for in our application. I think, and Chad can jump in here too if we missed something, but we thought this is really kind of our last piece, and then we want to open it up for questions. I know there's going to want to be discussion here, but some of the items that we've heard as far as just questions, discussion, we wanted to provide some feedback. And then obviously, let's get into, into questions and discussion. But, you know, Good Life, Good Life funding allocation, so the funding of the, the allocation of Good Life dollars. So again, as you saw in our phase one, phase two, and phase three, you saw how we broke that down. The biggest, the, I would say, the, the biggest part of this project is going to be the upfront part of it, right? That's going to be the biggest lift. You got to get in the infrastructure, you got to get people coming up here. The Eagle Scout, Eagle Scout Lake expansion, we need to make this a conducive neighborhood that people want to come to, both from a tourism perspective, that people want to live here. So we need to make sure the amenities are there to want to draw people to come up here to live, to dine out, to experience the mixed-use housing. So most, you'll see most of our Good Life funding allocation is slated for those first two phases. Because that's where the heaviest lift, in our opinion, to get this project going is going, is going to be. And so I think the other critical part I mentioned is the multifamily and the single-family housing. Been a lot of discussion of why would we allocate Good Life district, Good Life funding for housing? Because we need density. And because the project in its entirety is transformational. Not one, not one single element, but the project in it of itself. That's how we view this project. And so that's why we've made the request for those dollars to be used on the housing component, because we need density up here. And we also need increment to help fund the TIF. If there's no property tax increment, the aquatic center will be publicly owned, that will not generate any property taxes. The sports complex will be publicly owned, that will not generate any property taxes. So we need things and improvements that will generate increment in property taxes. So we talked a little bit about, Chad brought up the single land conveyance. From our perspective, if we're going to do a project of this size and scale, $600 million project, we're asking that the land be conveyed in one single conveyance. I know we've all been anticipating this. We, I think along with the council, want to move forward on this as quickly as we can, but we also want to provide assurances. You know, I think, hopefully the council has some trust level with us. I mean, we just completed Conestoga Marketplace, that project isn't done. That was a $200 million project. From our perspective, as I talked about at the, at the onset of this meeting, that's gone very well. And so we hopefully have built some level of trust with the community, with the council. And so, but we, we are happy to discuss, we've put in proposed clawbacks. If we don't do certain things, how does the city get this land back? We certainly are willing to talk about that. I think those items need to be fair and reasonable. This is a large-scale project, this is going to take time. We do need to be patient, but we also want to move quickly. I mean, a lot of these, I think the infrastructure, the Eagle Scout Lake expansion, the Confluence Plan was adopted. We liked the plan, we were a part of that process. We want to move forward with that plan. Little components within the plan, where things move, things like that, that can certainly be talked about as we advance through here. But the core infrastructure, where the, the right-of-ways will be, those type of things, we, in our opinion, those are set. Where we want to expand Eagle Scout Lake, those things should generally be set. So, but definitely we can talk about clawbacks. If the council's concerned, developer gets in this, things don't happen, okay? So we can discuss that. So we've, we've addressed some clawbacks in here. If, if we want, we can go back to these, but obviously you can read them as you go through our proposal here. Sports comp, sports complex programming size, I think Norm did a great job talking about this. This facility is designed to bring in tourism. There's obviously a quality of life component. I think the aquatic center fitness piece really fits that quality of life component. That's not necessarily what Good Life districts are set up to establish. We understand that's what the community wants. We want to try to address that. So there was discussion about sports complex size, how come it's not as big as Carney? Carney's size is bigger. I think Norm's a great resource to talk about the balance between having a facility that draws tourism versus quality of life. And so we wanted to put that on, on sort of our points that we thought would be talked about. Sports complex, aquatic, again, Brandstetter, Carroll, and the Health Fitness folks, extremely helpful. You know, as far as, is there enough dollars allocated? Are we going to build a 100,000, 150,000 square foot aquatic center? We don't think there's dollars in the budget to do that. 27,000 square foot aquatic center, that's very nice, that's similar and comparable to communities that these guys brought up, we think makes a lot of sense. That's why we've allocated the funding the way that we did. And then I know there was some discussion about how the city is going to administer fees on these Good Life funds. We actually have a similar, larger-scale project in Missouri, Joplin, Missouri, where we've brought in an outside legal counsel and accounting firm to help with those. And the reason we're a little bit sensitive to this, I'm sure Mike Rogers can touch on this, anything that we take out of the Good Life funds just reduces the bond proceeds, is going to basically reduce our bond capacity. So if we want to create maximum bonding capacity, we're trying to have, work with the city hand-in-hand here, but to make this as efficient as possible. So there's as many dollars available to build out the project. So with that, next stage documents. My understanding, there's going to be discussion tonight. I know we talked about having a council meeting next week. I think if we can get aligned on these things, we'd love to have an MOU and then work through definitive documents to move this project forward. So that's sort of how we would envision this happening. I'm sure there's going to be questions and discussion tonight, but those would be the next stage documents and timing on our end. So with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I've got a few. First thing I did want to say is, well done on the target, is fabulous. I've been through there more times than I was anticipating, and the place is always full. I think we've seen that it's been a great impact. You guys did a great job, continuing to do a good job on the marketplace. I will say, there's some good stuff in your plan here today. There's some questionable stuff, and there's some stuff that just, I think we're going to have some issues with. That said, I, I'm hoping that tonight gets us to a point where we can work with you guys on this. I think our best step forward to get this done is to work with you. You got it to this point. So I, I just want to start my comments by saying, that's where I hope we end up. But there's a lot of questions here that, I haven't looked at every page of the 612-page document that we got two days ago, but I've looked at a lot of it, and I've read a lot of it, and I've dug in and talked with some folks. So I want to start with the sports complex. You mentioned that it's not the size of Carney's. When you guys have done the studies, and I don't know if this is for Norm or for you guys, when you did studies, when you looked at how competitive this can be, and you talked about the one and five-hour distance, how does a Carney fit into that? How does a Columbus fit into that? Or some of these others that have been put in place since we first had some of these conversations?
Yeah, two, kind of a two-part question there. One is the, the size relevance. And I went to Carney today. And, you know, applause to all of us in the Midwest. I walked in, introduced myself as just a guy who's a sportsplex geek that goes to communities and looks at sportsplexes. And they said, "Look around." And the next thing I know, the general, the executive director and the head of the park and rec of Carney right behind us going, "Hi, welcome." Gave us a tour, chatted up. So where are you from? Why are you in town? "I'm in town to help Grand Island possibly build a sports center." "Great, let's keep talking." It was, it was, it was very nice. Carney's assets there, the turf, I believe, per their website, I didn't go measure, 66,000 square feet of turf, is a quality of life play, as I had mentioned, in terms of breaking the tour up. It is not going to be, it cannot run, asterisk, it cannot run anything of scale on multiple fields. It's got potentially one large field. You can't run a tournament, you can't have an economic impact draw at that. So has stated to me, 90% of the time, it will be divided in thirds or fourths like it's, like it's even labeled. During the summer right now, batting, she said that batting cages and baseball softball was the primary user. They're anticipating the winter, a whole lot more soccer, et cetera. But that's all quality of life. That's not bringing people in from out of town. And that's great, something you want to talk about, something we want to look at, that's fine. The track, okay? Another 11, 12,000 square feet, I think, according to the math on their website. Quality of life, it's free. It's open to the public anytime they want to come in and use it. That's certainly not going to track. The pickleball, four pickleball courts they have. She commented that it's been slower, because I believe there's a dedicated, a group in Carney, a pickleball association or something of that nature, that has opened or renovated a 10-court facility, and that's predominantly where they're, they're playing. So they've seen minimal use to date of that. But that's kind of the difference in the size, is the assets that will generate tourism versus the assets that are something that, yes, I understand the community like, but it's going to be a function, I think, of funding, of whether there's enough to do both.
In their space versus ours, will they be competing against us for tournaments?
Tournaments and events, yes.
Will we compete well with them, with ours versus what they have? Will we compete well with them, with ours versus what they have?
I think they're, based on our study, there is plenty of diversity of business for both of them. One other key, if you look at the 8 million people I mentioned between the one to five-hour donor, if you look at some of the major centers, they all have to come through Grand Island to get to Carney.
Oh, I like Grand Island better. Trust me, I'm, I'm with you.
Well, I'm not, yeah, but my, my point is that, that driving, and I don't know how many of you travel with your children, I mean, five hours is a little excessive to me, but we've got facilities that these places are nuts. They're driving eight hours to get to, to the right event. But to drive an extra hour to get the same assets is, is not necessary, and they have to come through here. One of the keys, and I mean this, and this is not a right or wrong answer, but by the fact that Carney is municipally owned, as this was, but it's also municipally operated, there is a sense I got from talking to these of much more community, park and rec, local involvement, and secondary was the tournament economic impact drive. And this business, this industry is not a build it and they will come. That was a movie. This is build it and go get them. And I think that having a professional management firm whose initiative and motivation, by the way, and not to get granular in that, but the incentive for that, for that operator is not simply a P and L, it's P and L from out of town. That's what satisfies the, the.
I, I agree. I think to do this right with that event center, that Sports Complex, we have to count on people traveling to get there. Uh, I just want to make sure that as we talk about that facility, the way it's designed, in your opinion, it's the best for us, it's the right size for us, it's the right makeup.
Size for us and configured, and I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm a sports center geek. Some of their layout on their hard court side is not overly conducive to spectating or even to player competition. To some degree, the, it's.
At Carney, you said?
At Carney, I'm sorry, at Carney. And so we've built into that this experience. I also say, and this is a little ticky tack element, they, she told me that they, because I kind of noticed they've got, I'm saying this like, has everybody been there? Has everybody seen? They've got a, a small little concession stand over to the side that actually they decided because of budgetary constraints to eliminate it at one point, and at the last minute said, no, we have to have something, and they stuck it in a corner. Food service can be one of the greatest parts of the experience of coming to a sports center, that you can come in with your family and have a nice, I'm not talking about sit-down meal, but you can have upscale concessions food, if you will, again, done by a proper operator, that adds to that experience that we don't have to leave to go somewhere. The way they've done it, it's, clearly it was an afterthought.
Thanks, Norm. I appreciate the update on that. Um, you're good.
I was, I, I'm going to say one more thing, because Norm, I think, hit the nail on that. I have four kids, I've been to 25 of these things. The experience matters. The experience matters. We've gone to so many facilities that are huge, and I don't remember how many times we've walked away and saying, gosh, I hope we don't have to come back to this one. But we'll go to a smaller venue, and it's the great experience. And so I just thought, I wanted to mention that, because I think Norm kind of said that in a, in a roundabout way.
It looks, yeah, I, I think you've added some great amenities in it. Uh, then move on to, I'm going to skip to the Aquatic Center. Guys, this is not even close to what we were asking for. I, I appreciate you guys coming and presenting this, but this is, uh, in my opinion, not at all what we would need up there. We're looking for, and hopefully it can be redesigned, if that's what it takes. Uh, when we say we don't think that 15 million is probably going to cover it, you've probably heard us rumble about that. Uh, the facilities we're looking at would be for a high school sports team to have their tournaments there, to potentially host tournaments, uh, to have, uh, I like the swim lesson part, but I don't, I don't think we've ever talked about competing with Island Oasis as an indoor version of that with the, with the, um, slides and things like that. That might be a nice amenity. That's an extra. Um, I think swim lessons, I think laps, great, but a facility where we can have kids and, and our high school have a replacement for the Y. I think that was our number one, and I think communities ask for an indoor pool, so there is some of that community aspect of it. The fieldhouse part of it, I think we, when we met with Confluence, we were talking about, we want a fieldhouse that looks a lot like the one we have at Foner Park. Not something that's going to compete with our private gyms or the YMCA, uh, for all those amenities. So that, to me, uh, that's disappointing to see. Uh, we, we were pretty clear every step of the way, I think, uh, that we wanted that type of facility included in this. Um, I, I don't know if we're allowed to pull somebody from the crowd, if they talked at all, um, if they, if we can do that or not, if anybody wants to volunteer. Uh, but these facilities, as we know them, they're not $15 million facilities. Uh, one of the things that worries me a little bit too, for the Sports Complex and the Aquatic Center, is in your financing plan, I'm not seeing a lot of operational costs. And you mentioned that, yes, there won't be debt, so that helps this versus a lot of these being private companies that have to have debt, and that's why a lot of them, most of them, lose money. I'm not sure how we're going to be able to count on, even with your lofty goals, getting to a point where they make money to operate, over operational cost. Where, I, I see your numbers, but where, what experience do you see that I haven't seen that that's been accurate?
We, as far as we're concerned, we don't operate sports complexes, we don't operate aquatics facilities. That's why we brought experts here. And the consultants we brought said that if built correctly, if managed correctly, these will operate profitably. So we, we're going to simply rely on our consultants and what they, I mean, we're not aquatics experts, and I would say we know enough to be dangerous on the Sports Complex, but certainly not to the same degree as Norm. But these professional consultants are telling us, if operated correctly, these will operate profitably.
And that relies on people coming from outside?
Well, that's realized by, that's realized by consultants who have built hundreds of these. I mean, these guys have built as many facilities, I don't know how they would rank amongst other consultants across the country, but probably fairly high up there as groups that have done a lot of work in this individual space. So that, that's why we relied on those folks.
Just wanted to address your one question. Like I said, when we drew that concept, the big rectangle that's the aquatics, we thought maybe the family component was splash pads and things like that was a stronger pull. If you're saying it's more competition, you can take that same footprint, it could be an eight-lane, 25-meter or 25-yard with a dive well, dive platforms, where we can do high school swim meets, dive meets. So you can easily take that and configure it and have it be competition-focused as well, as well as, you know, the grandstand area for, you know, three, four hundred spectators to watch it too. So we could reconfigure that space if you're saying we want more competition-type of a focus as opposed to family area, that can be configured in that footprint.
I think, I'm not the expert on that. Just when I talk to somebody who is, uh, he had even more concerns than I do when it came to this plan, and, and even with what could be done in this cost. Uh, I think, is it North Platte is putting in a, are you guys doing the one in North Platte? They're putting in one, I, I believe it was in the 30 to 35 range, 35 million range, that is closer aligned with what we're talking about. Uh, so when I see the funding for this and see that $15 million was left for it, I feel like that's, that's almost a non-starter. Uh, it is almost a non-negotiable, uh, from what we've talked with the community about. What you're talking about turning this into, say, what, what we're describing here, can you do that in 15 million?
I believe we can. I believe we can take that pool, and I'll let Ben help me out here from the facility perspective, but we can take that footprint, and as I said a couple of minutes ago, and switch the focus from more family-friendly orientation to a competition-type pool, eight-lane, 25-meter, 25-yard for high school, with a dive well, um, with, you know, diving in, in the competition focus as well can be done.
I'm not going to be as confident on that number, uh, just because we, we get burned a lot on, on that kind of stuff. Um, that's something that we can definitely look at to see, and I'd like to take a look at that, that other project, just to make sure we have an apples to apples, because there's a lot that goes into those projects. It's, and from our perspective, as we were looking at this, granted, in a vacuum, without any interaction with anybody.
Yeah.
Room, what, this, one of the things that we don't like to see is dead water. We want to have good utilization of all the water that, that's out there. So that, a lot of times in our world, it's, it's a balancing act, um, because wa, indoor water is, is an expensive proposition to build, it's an expensive proposition to maintain and operate. So we always want to be, we're, we're, if, if we're going to err on some, on some side, it's going to be on getting good utilization, and then at the, at the very beginning, and then we can, you continue to work with you guys, what that's going to look like.
I appreciate that. That's, you know, I think about this community asking for an Aquatic Center for, like, longer than I've been here, it's been talked about, the need for something like this. I think it is a community conversation. Um, I think we got to involve the, the swim teams, we got to involve the swimming community locally, the people that know, uh, that's not me, but they, they talk, they reached out to me when they saw this and had the same concerns. Uh, so I, I'm hoping that we can, we can continue that conversation, uh, but I don't believe it's a $15 million potential. I think it's going to be higher than that, which means we have to find where that money's going to come from. Uh, I think about this being a transformational project, and that being the first and foremost thing we need to accomplish. I think the Sports Complex, I think the Aquatic Center is transformational. You guys have mentioned traveling far to go to these places. We've mentioned bringing people from far. It makes me question the need to rely on all of the housing that you're asking for immediately, to be funded with this Good Life money, when we have people building houses now without Good Life money. They're using other incentives. We know we need these things. We need the event center, we need, or the complex, the Sports Complex. We've, there's been a demand for the Aquatic Center. We need housing in this community, that's a, that's for sure. But I don't think that will fail because people don't live in apartments across the lake. I think it's going to bring people there. I think organically, you put a lake right there, the housing will be of demand. I think that's going to be high-end housing, even if they're the apartments you speak of, I think that will be a demand. I'm struggling to put this much of the Good Life transformational money into the housing on this, on the front end, especially when we're looking at not enough money in this plan for that Aquatic Center. Uh, I have a few other, you, you, we kind of didn't talk about it, but it's in the plan for the event center, the wedding venue. Um, I think that was in phase one, the, the venue, the hotel, and a restaurant, you want $9 million of Good Life money for that. Uh, going back, sorry, scrolling through, this is just the 60-page version. Uh, to see some of, why, why would a restaurant need Good Life money in this case? I'm just trying to find that, the rest of that Aquatic Center money, and trying to figure out where we, where we get that.
Sure, yeah.
I, I understand seating a hotel a little bit, but if a private business like a restaurant is going to survive, why does it need part of this $9 million?
Well, I think it goes back, I mean, Jack, all your comments are, we appreciate them. I think it goes back to the project in its entirety is transformational. And personally, Norm can give you his feedback, I don't think people, we don't want to create a project where people come to a Sports Complex on 300 acres with a Sports Complex and Aquatic Center and an expanded lake. We want to have adjacent restaurants, we want to have an adjacent hotel, we want to have walking trails, we want to have people there, we want to have life there. Okay? So we want to use funding, I said, the front two phases of this are really the big, heavy lift, so that's when we want to get people there, we want to get residents living there. I understand your point, it's well taken. Why are we using Good Life Funds on housing? Because we need to create a destination of development up here. We need people living here, we need people coming to this Sports Complex, and we need, without housing, I find it hard to believe, if we got any kind of quality restaurant concepts today and said, will you put a restaurant up here, nobody would come, right? There's nothing up here. There's nothing up here. Part of that is creating the vision and putting the infrastructure in, but a big piece of that is having a residential component where people live here day in and day out, and will frequent those businesses. And I think to the Sports Complex, I mentioned experience. I think this is not going to be the largest Sports Complex in the state of Nebraska. So we better create an experience that people remember, so they want to come back and use the facility, uh, and so that's what I think we're targeting to do.
Do you, I understand what you're saying about creating demand. I, I, I'm, I'm going to still struggle to see if this is the vision that we share out there. It's gorgeous. You don't think that the demand for housing will, will make it on its own? You don't think you can sell the houses there without $26 million of support?
I, I think it could be a very slow go. I think it could take a long time. And so the question is, do we want to get this activated and moving quickly? We do, right? We don't want to be, we don't want to be building houses, houses up here 20 years from now. We want this project to move along. Um, we want to create something that's special, that's unique for the community, um, and we think housing is a big component to that. When we sat down with Confluence and worked through this master plan, I mean, that was a big piece of creating a development, uh, where people are there day in and day out. So, because the flip side of that is, you just do public facilities, and people are just there to use those public facilities. So do the walking trails, do the amenities around Eagle Scout Lake get utilized? I don't think they do as much. That's why I think.
They're out there? They're utilized now, and nobody lives out there.
Well, but, I mean, but we're talking, we're talking about.
We're going to make it 10 times nicer.
Yeah, we're talking about.
Right?
Much nicer amenities. Um, and so that, that's why we think it's a really important piece, plus we need increment. You know, if the TIF is going to be worth anything, you need property tax increment. And a big portion of our Good Life proceeds are being utilized towards non-property tax generating items with the Aquatic Center and the Sports Complex. So that's the other reality of just the financing part of this whole development. It's a $600 million project. If the TIF is going to be worth anything, we need to create some increment. So.
I, I guess I'm still not there yet, and I will, probably, I have lost my place in all my notes and questions, but I'm going to struggle to see housing as being the transformational chunk of this at the high rate of dollar before we get everything we have talked about that is transformational. I'll disagree with you that housing makes this work. I think, I think that everything you have, hotel, restaurant, possibly, wedding venue, I can't, I can't see that. Uh, we have people in town that are doing these with their own private dollars and not next to a lake. It's hard for me to give you three, three to nine million dollars to put something in there to enhance this property. Would be gorgeous, would be great, would probably make it without a dollar from us, eventually. I don't think it's the transformational part of this that we're looking at. So it's things like that that I look at, and I, I'm just struggling when I see that we don't have the money allocated for the Aquatic Center. Uh, I think there's some beautiful stuff in here. I didn't talk about all the stuff I actually like, uh, because it's already 7:45, and I haven't let any of my friends talk. So, um, I'm going to do that now, I might have some more questions. Uh, thank you. I didn't mean to be rude to y'all. You guys, it is, it's a good plan, it's just not what we asked for. And you didn't know that, so. And you didn't know that, so. Thank you.
Mr. Hawsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to start off with the wonderful job you guys did at Kind of Stogge Marketplace, because Targa, Chick-fil-A, all of those have, well received by the community, B&amp;B, I mean, all of that stuff. So I think the trust is there. This project now is three times bigger, so it just basically goes from a $200 million to a $600 million. And I got really, there's three, three points I want to make, two of them got questions. The first point is on the land, I'm agreeable to the one-time transfer, I, I think that makes sense, because we're going to be developing the infrastructure all the way across the footprint, with the lake and everything else, so I think that makes perfect sense, with the clawbacks that are in there. And I think, I trust the clawbacks are all done, and I, you know, so I certainly agree with the land at one-time transfer. The second thing, and I'll talk a little bit about the housing, so let me try to get granular on the, on the housing side. In workforce housing, we got about 300 single-family houses in this project, workforce housing is about 350,000 max on the price of the house. If we use a TIF, and right now you could probably get about 1.85% on the TIF for 13, for the 15 years, that literally gives you a TIF of about $97,000. So now I got a $350,000 house, that you just got TIF for 97, so now it's really down to a $250,000 house. Then we're going to add Good Life District money, and I'm okay using some of that Good Life District money, though, but how much of that, 20% or whatever is in there, what does that lower the value of the house down to? That I don't get to an, to a house level, and the same thing on the apartments. So the apartments, because there's 1,000 apartments in there, they're at 235,000 for an apartment, per apartment, you know, which gets you down to this 65,000 in TIF, you know, and so, we're lowering the cost by using TIF, so now we want to layer on, I just want to understand, what's the rationale for the Good Life District money, outside of just creating a destination? I'm looking definitively, what's that house going to sell for, or what's that apartment going to rent for, or, you know, so if we build the house, or build the apartment, and we've already subsidized it down to here, and we're going to do more, define for me, what does anybody see? How does that translate into me wanting to buy a house, or live in an apartment there?
I think it's a couple things, Chuck. One, and this is a point that, that Jack brought up, is, I don't think we envision this to be, you know, Grand Island's luxury estate, right? We want this to be attainable housing. That was a really big piece of what the state ultimately approved, was bringing affordable housing to Grand Island. That was a key component of our state application, and one of the key considerations. So I don't want that to get lost. You know, one of the big reasons why they were willing to give up their sales tax revenue was solving a housing problem. So I think that's a key piece. Bring O'Connor in here, right? He's a great example, he's got a huge development at Copperfield, ask him, why haven't you built out on lots? It doesn't work, he's got TIF. So, the one piece that kind of gets lost in this, is we're allocating a significant amount of these Good Life dollars to what we're calling non-incarnate producing project areas. So the sports complex, the aquatic center, Eagle Scout Lake expansions, the amphitheater, none of those are generating any tax increment. What we are ultimately wanting to do, is leverage some of the Good Life proceeds for the housing, that will create increment, and then use that increment in areas such as additional infrastructure. What we're not talking about is, the full buildout of the project, it's great, we're going to get the key pieces of the infrastructure in at the onset, we've still got $40 million to put in, over the course of this project. That's got to get paid for somehow, and that's going to come from the TIF. That's no different than any other residential project that we have. But I think the key piece is, if we're going to be able to activate the beginning of this, Chuck, we, we do need subsidy to the housing, and it's because we're leveraging that TIF for future infrastructure needs. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I'm a numbers guy, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to, try to get it down to a, so if, like in Ray O'Connor's case, he built homes, $300,000 homes, and he sold them for 200,000. And so the first buyer comes in there, and he buys that home for 200,000, but a year later, or two years later, that guy sells a house, he sold it for 300,000. So the, you know, the advantage was just getting the first guy in there, you know, and, and that's where he got in, on, on the low cost, because that was Ray's cost. And so he got people to buy into the development. Are you planning the same type of idea?
I don't think there's a spread on the initial housing, to answer your question, no.
Yeah, I, I, we anticipate we may have to sell some of that initial housing for less than our cost. I mean, that's very likely. I mean, this thing, you're, we're pioneering this, coming all the way out here. That's what I'm trying to communicate to Jack, is, this is a huge risk, we have to go find lenders who are comfortable with this, who will come out here, I mean, this is on the very edge of town, and so, I think it's very likely we could build a $300,000 house, and sell it for 260, 250. But to your point, Chuck, we need to get the ball rolling. We got to get the ball rolling, so if that means we have to sell for a slight loss, but keep things moving, that's what we want to do.
So, I, I, in that regard, I would be supportive of using some of that 20%, whether it's 10 or 15, I don't know what the number is, I don't know what the right number is. I, I don't know that I want to give all of the non-revenue generating, the 20%. I don't want to give it up at the very beginning of the project, and have nothing for the next 30 years for non-revenue, because I think there might be something else that comes up later, and even though I don't have a project today, that, you know, anyway, so that's where I'm at. I'm okay using the Good Life District dollars to supplement the housing, but I don't know that I want to put the whole 20% in there, and I can't define what would be a lesser amount. But that's, that's my sense on, on the housing. The last thing is on the aquatics, and we talked about it a little bit. The three lanes, that was in the, in the diagram of the concept page, yeah, that wasn't going to be, if we talked about competitive, we're not going to have a competitive thing with three lanes, so it does need to be more. I, I don't know what the right number is, I, I like the, the thought about, let's, we can redesign the same footprint, and make it eight lanes or something like that. I don't know if it's eight or 10 that's necessary, in the deep, deep well on the end. 15 million, I don't think it's going to cut it, but what I'd like to do is, see 25 or 30 go into that pot, and then if it's not used, if we actually do develop a $15 million plan that accomplishes it, then the rest goes back on the Good Life District money, you know, it, it's still there, if we don't use it. But I, I don't want to shorten it up and just have a neighborhood pool. You know, I do want, I do like the competitive nature of it, in addition to the family use, and so it's that balancing act. But I don't think three lanes was going to do it, I'm thinking more, you know, than eight, eight to 10 lanes. But I'd like to beef up that pot a little bit, and if we don't need it, if we come in with an eight lane, and it fits in 15 million, the rest stays in the Good Life District pot, so, I'm good with that.
I think part of the aquatics piece, we didn't, we didn't totally know, right?
Right.
And so, we were, we were, we wanted to get an application in, we needed to allocate, we allocated, but again, we took a little bit of a hit last legislative session, as we all know. So, we had to, you know, it's, it's Christmas, but we had to start moving around, where do we allocate these dollars, and we can't get everybody the present that they want, so to me, there's got to be a little give and take on that.
And I'm, I'm good with the TIF, and I'm good with the EEO stuff that we had talked about in the, in the past, and, you know, then one, one last question is on, I agree that we all need a professional management to run this whole facility, the whole complex. How many of those people exist? Do we know? I mean, is there two in the, is there 10? Is it a big market?
Yeah, it's probably between 12 and 15, all right.
Okay. And, and when, when do you bring them aboard? Do you bring them aboard now? You know, because somebody who's going to manage it, when's the right time to bring them aboard? Is it when you're developing it, so that they can give their expertise on...
You're not building something that is so unique, that there's going to be 15 different options, in terms of, I mean, there's going to be X, X, from a, from a community standpoint, from a sports tourism standpoint, the assets are of certain size, there may be a quantity question to it. And if I could, Councilman, I would like to comment just real quickly to the, and I think there was a segue there, that I just want to make clear, the out-of-town visitors aren't the majority of the revenue that are being generated from this facility. At the end of the day, the cash cow is the 52 weeks of the quality of life. It's the leagues, it's the instructional programs, the summer camps, the birthday parties, the school's day out functions that we do there, all of that is what, because the, the revenues we get from the out-of-town, a lot, is, is simply the rental fee, because it's a, it's another group that's running it, that's getting the, the gate, that's getting the registration fee, and so it's not, it's not the majority of the revenues that come in there. So I just wanted to make sure that's the nuance, isn't there.
Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Neal.
First off, I just want to say, I think that the city and with Zonia have had a pretty good relationship. You guys have been doing a really good job, the Kind of Stogge Marketplace, I think it's turned out really well out there. And we just need to keep this constructive, you know, I think there's a lot of feedback, and, and we just need to be honest with you guys. I want to start in on the aquatic center, a little bit here as well. I'm, I'm pretty familiar with that, I've swam a lot of laps in the current pool here in town, I have had kids that used to swim competitively a long time ago. So the current pool has six lanes, and it's nowhere near meeting the current demands. It's fallen well short, it's very, it's older than I am, it's on its last leg. You know, obviously, we talked, this three lanes isn't remotely close to being able to do competitive events, if six lanes isn't meeting it, we're, we're going to need to go eight or more. A couple other needs, I don't think were mentioned, I want to cover this. There's a need for therapy in these pools as well, outside of lap swim, a lot of times warm water therapy pools are very common for this type of thing. I don't think that was mentioned tonight, I think that'd be a, a key need that needs to be met. There's a lot of people that use the existing pool for therapy, it's over capacity. The diving area, I think we talked about that already as well, that should be there so we could allow diving, and also consider some other type of like zero enter, zero entry pool, and some other features for, you know, splash pad, those type of things. So, we really need that pool to be beefed up a lot, I think that's been hit home quite a bit. Obviously, I don't think that you can do that for 15 million, but some more research probably needs to be done on that, and I just want to give you the full feedback. That need just didn't happen now, I, I've been talking about this for 20 years with people, it's, it's been needed a very, very long time. This is a huge need, and competitive swim events will also help draw people here as well. I've been in a lot of these other pools around the state, some are better than others, but Grand Island needs a good one, and hopefully, you guys can do a little more work and kind of see what you think it would take. Going beyond that a little bit more, so, when the voters voted for this, they had an expectation of what they would get. They saw an athletic complex, they saw an aquatic center, all this stuff, and they're going to expect that to be built right. And I say, well, how, how could we fail to meet their needs? If we do not have enough Good Life dollars to meet the expectations that they are demanding with that, then we're going to fail. And we need to make sure we have enough dollars allocated to those projects, and the really big ones, the athletic center, the aquatic center are huge. I know you might need them for other things, but we have to make sure what the voters want is covered. That's, that's a massive need, so, that's the feedback I wanted to pass along.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
Since we're talking about aquatics, I'll put my two cents in worth there as well. I can't disagree with anything I've heard, I made a list of things when the guys were presenting the aquatics part here, people that needed that, and from what I was seeing, I'm not sure that covered it as well, but I, the competition part is important, schools was important, just athletes in general, training, which would be part of the competitive part, the public use is important, the therapy, which Ryan talked about, and the aerobics, all those things are public input, are not input, but public use is very important. I'm not sure that one pool is enough to cover all that. So my question to the guys, the aquatics experts, do you see an opportunity for you to have one pool that does a lot of stuff, but you also got that other pool for, for the therapy, and you've got, you know, I, I don't want too much water, but right now we have one pool in town, and it's not serving the purpose, and I'm not even sure what the per, what the future of that is, I'm going to ask that question after we're done with this.
We collectively worked on a project in Cincinnati area, the Delhi Athletic Center, where it does have a competition pool with a dive well, and grandstand area for high school competitions, as well as a warm water therapy pool, as you were saying, for some of the therapeutic needs that the community has.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think one important thing that you said, public input, and, you know, from a normal standpoint, from a project we're working, you know, that's how we'd like to hear what the public wants in their pool. I design pools, year in and year out, all different shapes, all different sizes, but it's always generally designed to the need of the community. We like to say this, we right-size the pool for the needs of the facility. So, in that, you know, we also have to design to budgets. So there's those two sides to that, when we're trying to design this to get the facility for you. And we're hearing now, I'm hearing for the first time really, that it's a competition pool that you're wanting. So obviously that was the wrong fit. And, you know, getting a six lane is too small, eight lane is great for a high school, but there's a lot of other considerations to go into that, too. So, you know, that's a process where we go through, and we design the facility to meet your needs, and also to meet your budget. So we got to make those two come together.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not faulting you folks at all, you were given a number and a concept, and you did, you did what you thought was best, so that, nobody needs to beat you up here tonight for that. Did you have a comment?
I think a lot of the, a lot of the projects we work on start with that, hey, we think we have this much to spend, what can we get? And then that ends up fostering a lot more conversation.
Right. So, we really have a need, and we need to tailor it to, your point, what the community wants, and we know we've got a lot of seniors that like to, they're going to probably be there in six in the morning type things, not me, but they'll be there, I'm sure, to do all that kind of fun stuff, and get to swim, and do your exercises, and all these, you know, things that, that people like to do. And, and I think our water center will get used a lot, I think it'll get used a lot, because right now we're limited at the Y. So I appreciate what you guys have presented, I'm not crazy about the full-service fitness center approach, because I think that starts competing with the people we have here already that won't have the advantage of water, and then when that 2,600 people that you're talking about, that you think will come here, you know, are going to be pulled away from somebody else. So then we may have fitness centers sitting idle that, because nobody wants to go there. So we got to have that balance in the community look as a whole, I know competition is competition, you know, if you're using a lot of taxpayer dollars to fund something that puts somebody else out of business, I'm not, I think we just have to think through that well. But the aquatics part, definitely, we've got, we want to focus on, I think we want to focus on.
Yeah, we, we have, we have both. I can tell you from our experience, though, as I was showing you some of the demographics, I think, I don't think the latter would happen, where you'd have fitness centers going out of business, because we have this. I think you can vary the scope of the wet and the dry land, I just think you'd, you'd have a greater draw, if you have some type of dry component, it doesn't have to be the same, same scale or size that we show in there. I, I mentioned the West Hartford project, when we transitioned that, they have three separate pools, and they had no dry land, but they had two smaller rooms, so we made a smaller equipment area, and then a small group classroom, to just offer some of the wet and dry programming, and it was a big plus for them. So, just trying to share with you some of our experiences, but if it's wet only, it certainly can be that.
No, I think you've got a fair point, that we don't need to make it a scale that, that is going to draw all of our people away from our competitors, but to have some component, I think that's a fair point, so, thank you for that. My question to anybody in here that may know this answer, because I've only heard this secondhand, thirdhand, tenthhand, I don't know, what's the future of the Y pool? Because I heard at one point, the whole idea of going north was so they would not have to have their pool. Does anybody know that story, or is it baloney?
I'd like to bring up our YMCA consultant, Pat O'Neal.
Yeah, thank you.
Pat O'Neal, former YMCA board member for six years, currently back volunteering for the YMCA board, just two months after I got off, on their search committee for hiring a new CEO, we met three CEO candidates, YUSA, and the regional representation, a lot of what we talked about was actually pools. So, lifespan of a pool is about 40 years, current YMCA pool is about 48 years old. Lincoln Pool was about 40 years old when the city gave up on it, tore it down and replaced it. The McCook YMCA was built two years after the Grand Island YMCA, chief construction was the contractor, bonds all pools, built the pool, we just demolished that pool about three months ago. The YMCA pool here is on its last legs, as soon as this pool is built, that one's gone. It's very, very difficult to replace an indoor pool inside of a building, as the director of the McCook YMCA can attest to, your problem is you have to hold that building up in the air while you tear the pool out, because your footings are about, in that case, 11 feet higher than your actual pool depth, when you excavate that to build the new pool. They decided to replace their pool in place, I can guarantee you, they would not make that decision again today. Shoring alone to hold that building up... Shoring alone to hold that building up was about $400,000. Cost to demo that, everything, it's about, it was about $800,000 more to replace that pool in place versus building a new one. So the YMCA pool, once again, passed it to the end of its useful life. Not really able to replace it in place due to a lack of space. Anyplace you would build a new pool at that existing YMCA, you would have to tear out parking. So no, basically that pool would be gone. Chad Musick with Chief, me and him worked on a budget two years ago or three years ago, new standalone indoor aquatic, eight lanes, 25 yard short course, the associated locker rooms, all of that stuff was about 13 million bucks at that point. You're probably 15, 16 million dollars to do that nowadays. The, the pool proposed tonight, it just, it's, the Holdridge YMCA built a new pool eight, nine years ago. It's, Holdridge has a population of 5,500. Their pool is larger than the pool proposed tonight. This would be the smallest municipally owned pool in the state of Nebraska. I don't think it's what we're going for. I'm not going to speak to where the money comes from or anything like that. If, if you had a $15 million budget, could you build an indoor aquatic center? Probably not. You can do a, you could do a warm water therapy pool. I think we budgeted a warm water therapy pool, eight lane, 25 yard short course, diving well, room enough for about 300 spectators and you could probably hit that in that 15, 16, 17 million dollar budget range. If you guys want to look at aquatic centers, Pierre, South Dakota is a, was in a very similar situation. The city wanted an indoor aquatic center. They did not want to run it. They built a, an indoor aquatic center. This one here was, I believe, 7,500 square feet. They built one about 15, 16,000 square feet. That was $12 million. I don't know how they got it done for $12 million, but it was a $12 million center. The YMCA fundraised $2 million. They built it on the side of the YMCA. The YMCA operates it. North Platt, we're actually a contractor on that pool project as well. If you really want to be jealous, if you look at what North Platt did with their new rec center, it was a $43 million bond issue. It will create an indoor aquatic center with an eight lane competitive pool, splash pad, water slides and an indoor therapy pool. It's about three to four times the size of what was proposed tonight. Obviously that's a price tag far in excess of 15 million. That overall project was $43 million, but it included a new super gym, a bunch of new programming space. The aquatics portion of that, I reached out to him today to try and get a budget on it. I didn't hear back, but it's probably in that 20, 25 million dollar range. Fitch Family Aquatic Center is a new one in Ames, Iowa, which is also about three times the size, similar to what North Platt is doing. And they had a $28 million budget, but I believe that included land acquisition and remediation of contamination. So, so it, it all depends what the city wants to do, where you're going to end up budget-wise. The, the need, right now our swim teams, we cap them. The senior high swim team is capped because we don't have enough pool space. The YMCA swim team is capped because there's not enough pool space. So you would, I, I would think you'd have to do at least eight lanes, maybe 10. But really, once you hit a 10 lanes, you're, you know, eight lanes would probably be sufficient. So.
I appreciate your input and your expertise with the Y because I think it's important. That's even more important for me to emphasize and the rest of us that have talked about it, a bigger aquatic center than what we're planning because the one we've had just wasn't adequate, just didn't meet the need. So it's got to be bigger than that. We've got to think bigger than that. The use of the Y pool is more than just swimming though, correct? I mean, you do all kinds of stuff down there or no?
Yeah, the YMCA pool is, we schedule that thing from, it's not just six in the morning, it's 5:30 in the morning to basically when it closes. What surprised me is when we started researching new pools, how many people we have there at two in the afternoon on a Tuesday. But from the time you do lap swimming at 5:30 in the morning, exercise classes for elderly, open swim for families, then you have high school swim team, then you have the YMCA swim team, open swim again. It's, it's programmed 24/7. You would, if you built an eight lane pool out there, you would, it would be, you would probably overuse it the day you opened it. We also provide all swim lessons. City does swim lessons, YMCA does swim lessons as well. One of the great things we did at the Y, we were able to secure enough grant donations to give free swim lessons to low income children. And that's something, you know, if the, if the city was looking for someone to operate this pool, you know, the YMCA would definitely, would definitely be interested. The last iteration of the master plan I saw had room to build a YMCA on the side of the aquatic center. I don't know if that's still in there or not. Most people who build pools do not want to operate pools. Most municipal owners who build pools do not want to operate pools. And that's where you generally see the private sector come in, someone like a YMCA. Obviously the exception would, to that would be city of North Platt.
Sure. Just one more question. What's your definition of elderly? You threw that word out there.
I will tell you, that, that definition changes every single day. I would say right now, over 110.
Okay. There you go. All right. Well, thank you, Pat. I appreciate the input.
Brown.
Well, I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet. I'm just getting started.
Please proceed.
All right. That covers the aquatics part. We need something bigger and a little bit of dry, sounds like probably a fair deal there. We'll re-look at that. The next thing I want to talk about is, let's talk about the housing. That's already been brought up. And one question for you folks, and again, I want to just reiterate what you've heard tonight already about Conestoga Marketplace. It's just phenomenal change there. I drive by there. I actually ate at Chick-fil-A last night at 6:15 PM and I could not find a place to sit down inside until somebody left the six seat table, which then I took and invited three other people to come and join me because there was nowhere to sit at 6:15 on a Tuesday night. The other part of that story is those three people came from Henderson, Nebraska after practice to come in and dine at Chick-fil-A because they had to go do some other shopping. That's kind of an interesting story. I mean, that's, and that's not uncommon. All right, let's talk about housing. In the Conestoga Marketplace master plan, you had proposed a, an apartment complex. Is that still in the cards or do you see that shifting because of this plan here?
Still move forward.
Still in the plans? Okay. So that was, how many units? I've got different numbers here. I'm not sure what the real numbers are on that.
312.
312? Okay. That is between 250 and 350 that I had. Okay. So when we talk about housing, and I'm a realtor, gradually getting out of the business, but involved looking at listings every day and, and aware of what's going on. We're currently at a little over between 150, 160 homes. And the new construction is happening. It's happening, but you can't hardly find thing, anything for 400,000 or less. And the longer we wait, the proposed housing out here is not going to be any less. So I'm trying to think when we're looking at the magnitude of homes that you want, and I guess the houses themselves are not a huge part of the number, 291. Somebody has to buy them. That's an important part. You can build all the homes you want. You can build all the apartments you want, but unless they're at a price point that people can afford, they're going to sit vacant. And, and so that's got to be factored in. I don't know if this, this number is big to me, very big, because you're not the only people that want to put up houses. We have other developers in town that are doing that. Our need is roughly 300 housing units a year. You're proposing 1,500 housing units. That's about five years' worth. We already have at least a year's worth already in the pipeline. What you've got proposed at Conestoga Marketplace is another, I mean, if you want to rent versus buy, you've got another year's worth there. We, we reach a point, we have, have to balance what's coming into the city because you can saturate the market to where you've got too many built and they're sitting. And then that can have a reverse effect on, on the properties themselves. I'm going to give you a case in point. I have a home that's managed in Colorado Springs by a property management group. I got a letter the other day letting property owners know that because of the saturation in the Colorado Springs market, they are recommending that you start lowering your rent because there's so much competition right now. At one point, they said, we want to fill your lease, but if we don't have anybody take this lease or re-sign, we're recommending that you reduce the price 5% each week until somebody comes to get it. That's Colorado Springs right now with a, a real estate group that's deep into the market. They're so deep into it that they have, have Zoom meetings every week to, to let people like me know what's going on. So I don't want that to happen here. So I want, when we look at the housing component, I want to make sure that we've got the other builders that are building, that they've got a fair chance, that you build what you think's important, but we've got to space this out. And I don't, don't have an answer for that tonight. I'm just letting you know the reality of where we're at. Your one project alone at Woodsonia, at, not Woodsonia, at Marketplace is already a year's worth if, in a rental. We've got some other people in the audience tonight that have been working on some projects of other units that are over 200 units. So we're, we're getting pretty good. And I've got Chad here. I'm not going to ask him to tell me I'm right or wrong or anything. I'm just going to tell you my, my observation is that we're getting to where we're getting our, our 300 pace is looking pretty good. And we've still got some on the books here. I've still got a couple that have been approved for TIF financing that amount to another 360 units. They just waiting for prices to come down, interest rates, and they are starting to come down, so we may see those happen. We just need to balance that because we may hit a point where you may have all good intentions to, to build out here and, and the homes won't sell. I've got, on the listings that I've seen recently, there's many, many of those homes that are already built at less prices than what new homes will be. And they've been sitting on the market three, four, five, six months. Some of them, one in particular has been on the market for over a year, but it's, and it's like 700 and some thousand. So that's just a reality check of where we're at as we're looking at a nice, beautiful end product here. That's my comments on the housing. Don't, don't have any, any great things about that. I did want to touch base on the event center. You talked about an event center there, so that event center word kind of clicked with me. What does that event center mean in your opinion? What is it?
It would be, you know, events between 250 to 500 people, wedding events, graduation ceremonies, those types.
Okay. But it's not where you're going to bring in bands and hold concerts and stuff like that that would compete with? We have, we have an event center here as well, and so I don't know what kind of events.
Isn't no way going to compete with.
It's more of a community type, event center type thing like we have at here, Grand Island type thing where.
Totally different.
Okay. And then you may not even have the bands. Okay. So that's not going to compete with the Heartland Event Center or anything. That's a much grander scale then. Okay. Then, so that, that's where I'm at on those. My next question will be more for Patrick. And we take a look at all the costs of what's being proposed here tonight. And I did send him a note a while ago. He gave me answers, but I can't read his handwriting, so I'm going to have him, I'm going to have him talk to us. But I'm looking at $130 million here of Good Life proceeds that are at least being estimated right now on the three phases that you have. I'm curious about what is the revenue that we're anticipating on Good Life proceeds over the next 30 years? We've already got, what, two under our belt? Two years already under our belt? Uh, yes. Probably a little over a year, actually. Little over one year? Yeah. Okay. So we've still got 29 years technically on the books. What, what is our estimated revenue for those 29 years? And I know we're, it's all, it's going to be a guesstimate. We know kind of real world now, but we don't know what's going to happen down the road in the next five, 10 years. So this, the state last year at the legislature limited the income to 5 million. Okay? That particular area was doing roughly seven and a half million in, in tax. So the 5 million would pay for, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, the $93 million bond, which is phase one.
Yeah, we, we, we would pledge, we would ask that those be pledged for a bond issuance, Mitch, and then our hope would be that it would net about $95 million, which would fund, yeah, if you want to go to the chart, which would provide the necessary Good Life funding for phase one.
Okay, so.
How that would work. Because it's a combination of, Mike Rogers can speak to this. It's a combination of that $5 million cap plus new, and it's a sort of a complicated formula. So there'll be a determination, probably what, through the Department of Revenue, on how, what's classified as new. So we made some assumptions and I think DA Davidson, your underwriter, may have actually provided this projection.
It, it's, it's on page 496 of the PDF. It's, it's in the PDF application. We did a bond analysis, Mitch. So like Pat talked about, there's, there's really two categories. There's existing sales, right, that were there the day that the application got approved. And that got capped at 5 million. And then a new sales within the district, which there's parameters for what constitutes a new sale, right? But new sales, and I don't want to misquote, it's in there, I think is around, you know, 100 million. And that's made up predominantly from users at Conestoga Marketplace. At this point, it's only users at Conestoga Marketplace that are new. So by example, Target, Chick-fil-A, PetSmart, Old Navy, those, Boot Barn, those are users that are all new. Those are all users where their sales tax revenues or Good Life revenues flow in addition to the $5 million cap. So when we looked at the 95 million, and this is, we'll talk about phase two and three. This gets a little bit complicated, but this is one of the big changes that happened as a result of the legislative, of the last legislative session. So before, we were estimating that bond proceeds would be about $135 million when we did the initial bond issuance. Today, that's closer to probably 92 million. The other 3 million that we have is the funds that the city's currently collected, which the city has been collecting funds for, call it 18 months. So a big change is we think the existing revenues and new revenues will support 95 million of bond proceeds. Okay? For phase two and phase three, the proceeds that we're requesting is 26 million and the 9 million. There's no guarantee those proceeds are going to be there. Those are on top of the existing revenues. So to be frank, we're taking, I think, a substantial risk of saying, okay, we're going to guarantee that the city gets, you know, the key components that the city's talked about. Can't guarantee it's going to be an 80,000 square foot aquatic center, but we want to make sure we are delivering on the city's expectations, be it, they want to see the sports complex, they want to see the aquatic center, and I think they want to see Eagle Scout Lake expanded. We want to make sure that gets covered in phase one. That's in the initial bond proceeds. That money gets issued, that goes in, that's happening. This 26 million and 9 million, these are proceeds above what is necessary to service those 95 million our bonds. If we don't have an increase in sales, we don't get that money.
Yeah, it's like a, it'd be like a pay as you go, kind of like a TIF.
So that's where we said Woodsonia privately pledged. These are shown as, you know, amounts, 13 million, 500,000. But it's going to be our job to go actually get private debt that's going to be backed by those Good Life district revenues. And if those Good Life district revenues aren't there above the initial 95 million bond revenues, we don't get paid back.
Yeah.
So I, that is something that we haven't talked about because it's a little nuanced. I'm glad that we are, but.
We, we would ask, though, I'll just add this, we would ask though, that if rates come down and we're able to refinance the overall bond proceeds, that that could pick up some of that 35 million. We'll take the risk on it upfront to kind of get, but if rates drop 150 bips and suddenly the 95 million proceeds can go to 130 million, we would ask that those dollars can be paid out. But we'll take the risk, sort of like a TIF, if you will. I don't know if that makes sense, Mitch, but we'll take the risk that we'll go try to get the revenues created.
Again, Patrick, with this guesstimate that we have, and 5 million, 5 million has been approved, but that that's not a cap on the additional additional sales tax from new business. Is that correct? Will that be on top of that 5?
That's correct.
So, and we don't know what that is for sure.
No. The estimate for Target at one time was 1.5 to 1.8, I believe.
And that's not counting the other businesses that make that up? I mean, that's just Target.
That's just Target, yeah.
Not counting the others. So so we, let's say we're, we anticipate 7 million, 7 million or more a year total. That's over 30 years, that's 210 million dollars. So when we, when we hear a proposal or request that, you know, give us, let us bond 95 million, the debt service on that is roughly how much? Because that, how long is that going to be? Is that a 30-year bond or is it a, what, how's that all work?
30-year.
30-year bond? So just kind of curious, how's that debt service compared to what we're making a year and estimating to make a year?
Uh, Mike Rogers with Gilmore and Bell Bond Council for the city. So, yeah, the the projections go out for the duration of the Good Life District, so now a little less than 29 years left, I believe. And so, yeah, the, those projections showed the 5 million was capped, and so you max out on that side of it with debt, and and you have some coverage because you've got 7 million or so of revenues now, and that's going to grow, so that's a pretty good credit on its on its own. And then the other side, the additional revenues from the new businesses that have that have opened, you know, starting at 2 million and and then increasing each year, that's the that's the one that's a bit more of a question mark that, you know, would, how much of those additional revenues that come in will dictate how much in bond proceeds can be delivered from a, from an offering of bonds.
What's your, what's your rough estimate for a 30-year bond on 95? What what's the annual debt service look like?
Uh, well, annual debt service is, you know, ranging, starting at 2 million and going up to, you know, $6 million at the end of that range based on expected growth in sales taxes. And that's just, you know, it's it's an estimate based on some of the businesses that have already either opened or announced that they're going to be opening, and it really kind of depends on, as Mitch said, how well these guys do it, bringing in more businesses, and, you know, what natural growth looks like. And the other thing I will I will mention is the 95 million in in bonds is a rough estimate. A more conservative number would, based on interest rates, would would show that as being less than 95 million in proceeds delivered at closing, but that's just a function of the market at the time bonds are offered.
Okay, but the bottom line is, we should have more than enough revenue to cover our bond payments with plenty to spare, it sounds like.
Correct, and and that's that's the other thing, that, you know, the $5 million cap, that can function on its own, that that financing would likely function on its own, and then the other, the other side of it would have a coverage number. Investors are going to want to see, you know, a certain coverage ratio on the the revenues compared to debt service, so.
Right.
There's, there would be additional revenues generated on top of what the debt service is to cover either adding money to pay down bonds earlier so that these other subordinate obligations could be refinanced, like Drew mentioned, or those excess revenues possibly being released and and used to pay the the subordinate obligations that that Woodsonia is proposing to to take here for phase two.
What do you typically see lenders require for that little extra coverage? Are they usually looking for a two to one?
No, no, not, not that.
Not that much?
Not two to one. I think the projected coverage that was modeled here by DA Davidson, DA Davidson is the city's underwriting firm, was ranging from 1.2 times coverage to, you know, 1.5 times coverage, sort of, again, depending on how revenues come in over the course of those future years.
So 5 million satisfies that pretty steadily if we maintain that 5 million, sounds like.
And that's, the 5 million is on on its own, and that coverage ratio would be one to one, because you already have the built-in coverage with the additional revenues that are generated. If it's 7 million, it's more than 7 million dollars.
It's like 7.8 million.
7.8 million dollars in revenues, and the state's only going to send you 5 million. If those revenues drop to 7 million, the state will still send you 5 million dollars. So that's got a coverage ratio built in already.
Sure.
It's the other one that would have, that would need a coverage ratio for investors because you're not, you don't have the built-in statutory ratio that 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 the state just imposed last legislative session.
Okay, and in your opinion, is this a good project to go out and look for bonds on? Somebody's going to be out there willing to?
Yes.
Jump on board?
It's a, it's a pretty straightforward disclosure document. In terms of disclosing, you know, a sales tax revenue bond like this with a large amount of existing revenues is something that I think the the city's financial advisor and underwriting firms have said are marketable. And from our perspective as bond counsel and disclosure counsel in describing the risks, it's it's more straightforward than most projects. Most projects like this don't have any existing revenues to to build from, and this is pretty unique because there is such a large amount of existing revenues that can be leveraged to deliver bond proceeds at the start, which is great for everybody, for everybody involved.
Good news. I mean, financially, it sounds like a very good project overall.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's what I was hoping for. Thank you, and then just one more comment, Norm. No dedicated pickleball courts here. You make me sad here, buddy. I, I, you'd be surprised how much those things get used, but I suppose we got to live with the secondary lines and hope that we can figure out where the out of bounds is. All right, I am done, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I'm just, there's no new questions from me. I think all my questions got answered, but I just want to tell you how I stand on this, that everything on the aquatic center that Ryan and Mitch talked about, I agree that we have to please what the citizens wanted on the aquatic center. And the other thing that Chuck talked about, the housing and the percentage, the 20%, if you could do less than, and a perfect number on that, I agree with that, too. And I, all my questions have been answered, questions. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill.
I just want to expand on what Mr. O'Neill said, who's no relation to this Mr. O'Neill. Coincidental. And I think the Aquatic Center guys will know what I'm talking about here as well. So I've spent a lot of time at this pool as well. You have a lot of different profiles of types of people that swim, and I think it's really important that everyone understands this and and we communicate this and be transparent about this. So at the pool, you have people just doing regular lap swimming. You have people doing senior swim. You have people doing swim lessons, youth and adult. You have people that are going for therapy. You have people doing competitive swimming, and then you have kids in recreational swimming. You know, you have about six or seven different profiles of people swimming. Right now, that happens in one six-lane pool, and if you want to use this pool, it's like scheduling a dentist appointment to get a time to go in there. I think you guys know what I mean. And you can look at that, you know, I can go there at 5:00 in the morning, I might be able to go there at noon. Depending upon the season, if there's competitive stuff going on, I may or may not be able to get in at night. It's it's a nightmare. That's why you have to have more than one pool. You have to have the competitive pool with the diving ability. You need the warm water type of pool, and then you need something recreational that kids can do as well, otherwise it's just kind of anarchy in there. So I want to be very clear, because I think you guys are kind of in a tough position tonight, and and I just don't want to end up in a situation again, so I just want to be very clear. And maybe if you want to expand on that, too, feel free, but.
Charlie was shaking his head when you were talking. I was watching the back of his head. I just wanted to add on one thing. Those are all the things that that we do think about, and we've even done some graphics that show, kind of color code the various uses of the water to meet those specific needs, to to show how those get used. But we still want that good utilization, is that?
Yeah, yeah, it's tricky, and I think sometimes you might need more than one pool there, they could be different sizes, but yeah.
Possibly. The problem with the two pools is you have different water temperatures. That creates a whole other set of problems that you may or may not even want to deal with. So that's just a future conversation to have.
Yeah, I know that's one thing a lot of people are looking at, and we want to, if we're going to do a project this big, we need to make sure we're doing it right. And I just want to communicate a lot of the the feedback that I've heard in the community, and I've heard a lot of feedback over this aquatic center. And I just wanted to be transparent with you guys and kind of clarify on all those different use cases out there, so it's not just one thing. There's many different needs. Pretty much every demographic in town wanting to do something in that pool.
Ryan, I can't say enough that I.
You'll have to come up to the microphone, please.
Sorry?
You'll have to come up to the microphone, please.
Sorry, it's on TV.
I couldn't agree with you more operationally. Again, we missed, we missed the mark on the type of center that you, or aquatics that you wanted, multiple pools, warm water therapy. I'd say six or seven of our community-based clients are health systems, Advocate Health System, Chris's St. Elizabeth. So we do a lot of medical integration programming and warm water therapy. We have eight, 10-lane, we have some pools with multiple eight and 10-lane. So I think everything you're explaining, we have the capability of of coming back and re-scoping it for you.
Absolutely, just want to communicate that, so.
You could always do two aquatic centers as well. I'm kidding, right?
No, I can say, I don't think you need two different buildings for that, but, no, understood, but, yeah, whatever we can do on that. But I think you've heard half of council communicate this as well, so there's a lot of strong sentiment on that, so. But thank you.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. So you've heard a lot of us talk. What do we do from here? How do we get to meeting some of the needs that we're representing the community on and getting to a point where you guys can make it work? Because I think, obviously, we got to look at the aquatic center, right? That's got to be enhanced in this, in that 95 million, right? It's, for us, I, I believe that is a first round we have to have, along with the sports complex. So what is our next step? What do you guys need from us? What, what, what do we do next?
Well, I think Mitch can give you his two cents and feedback, but I, we, we understand we're hearing, we're hearing the council loud and clear on this aquatic center. I think for us, it's an allocation of funding, right? Whether it's competition focused, it's six lanes, it's eight lanes, it's, we just didn't get that granular, if you will, on this facility. We tried to allocate funding as we saw fit. To us, we can, we can put our heads together with Mike Rogers, see if there's other ways to enhance the funding, if there's other tools, if there's other things. I mean, we, we talked about a TIF. We hadn't really talked about an EEA. I mean, there are, there, there's, there's other tools in the tool belt. I mean, obviously, this will be a huge amenity for the city. We want to try to accomplish that as best we can, but we only have so much in dollars. So I think it'd be short-sighted for us to tell you tonight, sure, we can instantly reallocate 30 million to the aquatic center and make the rest of the project work. I don't think we should say that, because I don't think we can tell you that. Our position has been, the whole project in itself is transformative, including the housing components. I mean, Chuck brought up some great points, you know, how does that look? How do we reevaluate? We can go back, we can look at these, these phases, see if there's some ideas that we have and and come back or talk to staff. You know, I think some other key things need to be ironed out. Is the council going to support a single conveyance? We need to get that figured out. It's been going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. We need to figure that out. Our position is, it should be a single conveyance. There can be clawbacks put in there. You know, hopefully, our consultants got everybody comfortable that the sports complex, the size of that, is sufficient. So to me, if we're trying to drill down on what are the high-level issues, are we just talking about aquatics and funding? Is that really what?
Housing.
That, to me, is the biggest takeaway I have from tonight. So if that's our homework as the developer, Jack, I mean, that's what we can go try to work with the consultant on, but I still think, it still comes down to an allocation of funding, and how do these, how do these phases get allocated? You know, and how involved do we want to be on the aquatic center? Part of what we had proposed in our application was, there's a $15 million allocation. I mean, don't forget, the city is also getting, it's fully improved, right? So it's not, to Pat O'Neill's point, there's no land acquisition, there's no, so it's 15 million just for the vertical and the soft cost, which hopefully gets it a little bit further along. But I think it's, it's an allocation of funding, and then it's probably working a little bit more on the programming, it sounds like, to be more competition focused. But it's been a little bit difficult to to be able to answer that because some council members may have one opinion, some council members have, may have another opinion.
Let's pretend we all want a eight-lane, 25-yard competition pool with a, with a diving well, and we want the stuff Ryan talked about. Let's, let's pretend we want.
Ryan, you may be the designated aquatics expert on the council.
Put Ryan and Pat, we'll put the O'Neill boys together and solve this mystery. Are you, are you hearing the message on housing, though?
Yes, but I do think we need, I need, we need Good Life funding for housing. We need to get that moving. So we, we need the council. I understand the council's concerns, but we're taking a huge risk building housing up here as part of phase one. It needs, it needs assistance, and the Good Life funding would be, so to, we, we probably would not support saying, take all Good Life, all Good Life funding from housing and allocate it to aquatics. You're not going to see us support that position. Are there other ways we can try to skin that cat and find out how to get more funding allocated to aquatics? We're willing to explore that.
When I look at the lots you have up there, I, I think about what Scott Reeve has brought in front of us a number of times and what he has done using incentive money and and support, but he's put in a lake and he's putting in lots. He is filling them as fast as he makes them. I think the demand for those apartments will be there. There is a lake there. I think about, I live in a, a pretty nice neighborhood in this community, and 10 years ago, lots in my community, my neighborhood, were 50 grand. There's no lake, there's not even a park in my neighborhood. We need to work on that, but $50,000 a lot. That's to get built. Now, obviously, there's already infrastructure there, right? Chad reminded me of that. But we're going to work on the infrastructure with you, I believe, as part of what's in this with TIF. You're putting lakefront apartments up there that you're going to turn around, you're not selling those, right? That's 250 units that you're going to own, right?
Right.
Right, so I just, I, I think one of the guys up here said something about being competitive. I think this is going to attract, you're going to be able to build up there and fill them, right? I don't think it's going to be a real pole. I think there's incentive money that we can support you on, that we've talked about, but I'm with Chuck, the more we knock that down, the less competitive we can be anywhere else in town. I think it's not as much a pole as you're talking about. I think the amenities you talk about up there are going to get people to want to live up there, and I do believe, I believe it's going to support itself after a while. It's, it's not going to be the the big ask to get people up there. So I guess what I have heard from council tonight at different levels is that this is too much housing right away. Not, no housing, that's not what we're saying, but I believe we're saying, reduce that down a little bit in these initial asks of what we support with Good Life dollars. Maybe it's not a 35 to 43 million dollar aquatic center, but maybe it's not 250 apartments that we're, we're supplementing. And you're putting a lot of your own money in there. I see that chart, and I appreciate it.
Right.
But that's a lot of Good Life dollars for it as well, on top of some groundwork and infrastructure that's already being put in place as well. So I, I guess my, my biggest question is, are we, do you see a point where we're going to come eye to eye? Because I still say you're our best bet with this. You've put a lot of your own cost into this to getting this far. I don't want to throw you out. I don't think anybody's saying that right now, but what are we going to do? What, what are we going to come to?
We can go back and look at ways to, we'll come up with ideas on how to get more funding allocated for the aquatics. We'll work with the consultant to come up with a program and a design. Whether or not it meets the specifications of the O'Neill brothers, I don't know, but we'll, we'll see what we can do there. But we're going to want some Good Life funds for housing to get that first phase started.
Absolutely.
We're going to need that, we're going to need that to get going. And so I don't want to sit here and tell you, no, and then we get this project started. I think part of what we want to do is, we don't want to be overreaching, but we also want to be successful. And I don't want to steal from here to move to the right hand, steal from the left to go move to the right, and then I can't get the overall transformative project going. It's a huge lift. Jack, I hear everything you're saying, all the council's comments, we definitely hear it loud and clear, but we also want to be successful. We want to come up here, three years from now, five years from now, you come up here and you say, oh, wow, okay, these guys got everything they said they were going to get done in phase one, done. It's kind of what happened in Conestoga. I mean, the mayor may not, mayor may or may not remember this, but we had to arm wrestle for a little bit, and we had to kind of push back, but we wanted to make sure we had the right funding to make sure the project was successful, to bring in Target, to get these things done. So it can come across as developer greed at times, but it's really more coming across of, I want to make sure. So it can come across as developer greed at times, but it's really more coming across of, I want to make sure I have the funding so I can get a lending partner on board, and I can get the rest of this thing going in this Phase One area. So we heard the council loud and clear on the Aquatic Center, we understand that. Let us see what we can figure out there. But I would say, keep an open mind on being able to use good life funds for housing. I think that's important, especially-
I think that's fair.
Especially if the mixed use, if we're going to build a hotel and we're going to build a restaurant, I need some rooftops up there. I need people living up there.
I think the restaurant, I think we're going to struggle to be able to fund that for you. If it can make it, it'll make it. You're right, when housing gets there, it'll support it. Organically, I believe.
But I want to, personally, Jack, I want to build a sports complex that has amenities around it, that creates a great experience. So when people come to Grand Island, if they're from Iowa, South Dakota, Kansas, they come here, they can stay on property and they can go get something to eat. They can stay in a hotel. Is one restaurant, one hotel going to be a complete game changer for that sports complex? No, but it's a great start. It's a great start. So that's why I would ask you, don't shy away from allowing us to be able to get that part of it started. I think that's important.
But you agree we can hold off on the wedding venue, right?
I mean, people are getting married around here, you've got to have somewhere for them to go.
The last thing I'll say is, I think we had somebody that wanted to talk. Did somebody sign up to talk?
We have some, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't want to forget about him.
Is there any other questions?
We, we haven't forgotten about him.
Okay. That was it for me, thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Mr. Still.
Recognize you and thank you for the good job you guys did at the Conestoga Mall Marketplace. Just fantastic. It kind of turned out the way I thought it would be. When we voted, you said you'd bring a lot of restaurants and a lot of out of town businesses to Grand Island, and I've seen that. Do you have any, anybody in your pocket that, that you haven't announced yet, or that, that is seriously looking at us, or?
Conestoga?
Yes.
But not that we can announce.
Come hang around there on next Tuesday.
Yeah, you'll probably see someone.
Because I, I've, I've seen a lot all chained off by the bank, and I kind of assume it's chained off because it's sold.
We've got, we've got five pending outlot users that hopefully should be going soon. I know the city's got some permits from users that haven't started out there yet. But we do have a handful of users that are going to be on vertical on that. But on that end, too, not to belabor this, but, I mean, Jack, even on, I would say the arguably the best location in Grand Island, we're struggling to be able to pencil with restaurants, right? It's a challenge. It is, we just talked, we called Jeff Whitey, he's as good as they get. We've been talking with him for a year about doing another restaurant in Conestoga. It doesn't work. So there's challenges that we're trying to overcome, and when Drew says, we want to, we want to be able to deliver on what we're telling you guys, right? And I think we've been consistent from the start to, this right here, this is the project we want to do. So we want to put a plan that actually can accomplish that. But yes, Mark, to answer your, your question, we do have a couple more users that are going to start soon.
Okay. And additionally, I support the pool idea. I'd like to have maybe the city talk to the school system to see if they could give us some financial support for the, for the pools, since they'll be using it for competition, and there's also two other, three other schools in town. So I think that might be a source of funding that we could, we could ask to see if there, or if the schools are going to be sending their kids there. Do they have any grant money or anything that can help us do that? On the housing part of it, I, I do agree with Chuck and Jack. I think we need to start slow and do it right, kind of with our economy and the, the slowdown economically with the housing and that. I think we just need to be cautious, but I'm sure you can work it out right, you've got the experience to do it. I do support the sports complex. I see what Carney's done, I drive by there a couple of times a month, and it's just a fabulous facility. And, and I'm sure, and I have the confidence in you guys, that our facility will be just as great as theirs. Because the whole idea of the Good Life Project is to bring people to Grand Island, to spend their money, shopping or eating, and, and have a good time with entertainment and at the ball fields. And, and we can make money on that and grow as a syst, as a city and be a place, a destination place for sporting events. And that's what I'd like to see from you guys, when you put everything together to come back. This, I'm sitting here thinking that this reminds us of about four years ago, when we were sitting, planning out the Conestoga Mall, and what we liked and what we didn't like, and just hashing it out. And I, I think you got some good ideas and some good feedback from us, so good luck to you.
Mr. Nickerson.
Much shorter this time, but this is going to be for you to explain to me. Walk me through the first fa, the first phase, the first five years. What do you envision happening, the sequence of events, and how you make that happen, the, the five years, first five years?
It would probably be this.
Well, we're starting with grading. So it's a grading, I mean, we're, we're talking about the whole process. You've got the grading, which is a big project in itself. How do you start, and we're talking about this to be done in five years, according to what you've got here, anyway. I'm assuming, is the five years completed, or is it just a started phase?
Completed, yeah, so I, I can't figure this out, so-
You trying to shrink it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
So I, I will say this, Mitch, fortunately, we've got, what, eight of similar sized projects going right now for master plan subdivisions. So I do think that we are, well, one, qualified, right, to be able to talk about this, but two, very experienced in this area. Our plan would be, if we can move through, let's just assume that we work this out and we move everything forward, right? Got a big kumbaya. I would say as early as we can this spring, we would start mass grading, which will start with the dredging of Eagle Scout Lake. That's what the existing, because we're going to dig the existing lake down about 15 feet, and then the expansion. We'll take a lot of that soil, the soil that we can, and spread it out and mass grade the entire site. So the whole site will get mass graded. After that, we'll put in the primary infrastructure. It's all kind of, if I can't point over here.
You know, I, I'd like to let you do that, but you have to stay at the microphone. Yeah, you certainly bring it over there.
I'm kind of curious, Mitch, what, what do you think the timeframe is on the mass grading, you know, that type of stuff? Are we talking about a year, two years of the project alone? I mean, so just kind of, we're talking conceptually here.
I think we're 12 to 18 months for infrastructure. Where we would hope to be able to go vertical on some of these components, Mitch, that's the real question you're asking, is when can we go vertical? I would say within 18 to 24 months is probably reasonable. I'm pointing at Jeff and Chad, it's going to be their responsibility. But our, our hope would be to put in sanitary, storm sewer, gas, power, get all of that going. Now, we can start vertical components as soon as we have water in. So that would be our, our hope, is to be able to start some of these vertical components at that point. And in terms of the, the phasing of the initial components, Mitch, we'd want to start all of them at the same time. So as soon as we have that water in, we'd want to go vertical on the sports complex, assuming the city's designed the Aquatic Center, the Aquatic Center, 20 single family homes, 250 multifamily units, the event center, the hotel, the restaurant. And then in conjunction with that, all of the horizontal pieces of Phase One, so Eagle Scout Lake expansion, all the trail system that you see running throughout the site, all of that's in. We want it to be a livable site and not feel like you're living in a construction zone. So that's the fishing piers, it's the amphitheater, you know, you're going to be able to live, work, and play within this. Mitch, I think all those pieces are done within 48 months, of closing would be our hope.
I'll say 18 months of infrastructure, 36 months of vertical construction.
Yeah. Some will go faster, I mean, I think that the sports comp, what do you think the sports complex construction is, Chad?
16, 18 months.
Yeah, and, and he'll agree to LDs on that, so that should be fine. But, so Mitch, I think that's, I think that's realistic in what we anticipate. The other piece, because you did bring this up months ago, this is in our application, is we agree that we're not going to flood the market with housing. So we agreed no more than 100 units a year on the multifamily end, I think we said, was it 20, single family units on the single family end? At the end of the day, I mean, this goes to Chuck's point, we do need to sell these, right? No matter how much good life proceeds we're getting, we are signing on to the debt for a substantial amount of these pieces. It needs to be financeable, and we do need to make money. So we are agreeing, hey, we're not going to do more than 100 units a year communitatively, right? We might do all this in one phase, you might get 250 units, but it's going to take three years to do it. But that would be our, those are covenants that we're agreeable to, Mitch, and that we've proposed to the city, so that's not just us giving you warm and fuzzies. We will agree to that.
I, I think it's important that we have a balance there. I also like the fact that you're looking at a much greater rental market than single family home sales. I think the rental market is still going to be more conducive to what people are going to be able to afford. As prices get higher and higher, they're just not going to be able to buy. And they will be willing to pay the rent versus trying to, to come up with the down payments in $400,000 homes, $500,000 homes, that type of thing. It's going to be, it's going to be tough, it's going to get tougher. And I'm going to tell you, home prices will not be going down anytime soon.
I think the other piece in here, too, Mitch, and maybe we've done a poor job of communicating this, but the, the for sale product type is a mix of housing products. This is going to be single family, this is going to be duplexes, this is going to be fourplexes, but we want a mix of product types in here. This is not a luxury estate, right? You're not seeing multimillion dollar homes in here. That's not our intent, right? We want this to be attainable housing, right?
Well, the fact of the matter is, when you're looking at $275 to $300 a square foot, $1,000 property, a thousand square foot property is 300,000. So I mean, that's, that's the real world. We can, we can, I mean, you've got to shrink them if you're going to try to live within a certain dollar value. And, and you guys can work through that. And so that's just, I'm just kind of visually, I'm a, I'm not a conceptual guy, I'm, I've got to see things, so that's where my weakness is. So I'm just trying to think it through. But during that 18 months of grading, what happens to some of the other, what's affected around that? Because, you know, I'm still thinking, I've still got pickleball courts out there that I, and we still have the soccer fields, how's that all, does it affect any of that whatsoever?
No impact to the existing fields during that period of time.
Nothing is hurting, it hurts nothing at all?
Those will stay. I mean, there's going to be a period where we relocate the soccer fields to the south.
Right.
But as we've talked about, we're going to have those fields done before we go rip up there. There might be a two month period where there's not fields, and that might just be necessary, right? And unavoidable, based on when we're going to get a street end. Some of those pieces, we just can't work around. The city's not going to probably allow direct access off Broadwell. Keith might, I don't know. But it's just a necessary evil, but is that going to be extremely limited? Yes. But the existing fields, we're not going to be shutting off the access on the north end, so I'd see no reason why the existing baseball, softball, pickleball fields would be affected.
Good, good. Okay, well, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the community momentum is awesome today. Everything that's going on in Grand Island, and I think this project will continue that strength for the next decade or two. I still support the one time transfer of the land. You've heard all there is to hear about the aquatics and how we need to retool that whole thing. But the other thing that was pointed out that I think that I learned tonight while listening, was that I think that the housing risk and the financial risk is significantly higher than what I had thought coming into the meeting. And so I think I understand better the financial risk that you guys are taking, coming in here. And so for me, I'm supportive of using the Good Life District, non-revenue money for housing, because of this increasing financial risk that I see in this whole project. And I think it is going to take the whole project to make it work, so, thank you.
Brown.
Yeah, I just want to say that I agree too, that 100% conveyance, and what the clawback seems sufficient to me. So I just want to tell you where I stand on that.
Mr. Pollitt.
Next, Mr. Mayor. All I've got to say is, the competition pool has been floating around in the town for many years. It's not something that just popped out of the woodwork. And if we can't get one that's the right size, like I said before, you won't get my vote. I would rather see us wait 18 months to move, start moving dirt, have the financing in place, and do it right than start early. That's just me. Now, I know you guys make an increment on your apartments and some of the houses that are built. That's only where you guys can make money. I hope we can find a, a solution to our problem. Because this, this pool and, and Aquatic Center, if anybody has looked at the one that they were planning just north of Boswellman's, it was almost 50 million. And it had a lot of amenities. So if we, if we don't do it right, the citizens are going to hang us one way or the other. We either did it wrong on the low ball, or we did it wrong on the high ball. Thanks, guys, you did a nice job tonight.
Thank you. Try to keep you safe, Mike.
Jay, time for Chuck, did you want to speak?
Time's up, so please. I haven't seen Drew, I haven't seen Drew Snyder for, I guess, 30 years. He was on a basketball team in Columbus, and we went up against him each and every week. So when he stands this tall, it's really hard for me to hear on the microphone, but once again, good to see Snyder here and congratulate the initiative that his company has brought forward. And after listening to all the different comments, I guess I'd like to make two points. Well, first, I voted, probably like each one of you, I'm guessing, for, to approve the Good Life District, because of the tremendous opportunity it poses to redirect money that's going to the state that now can be back here. I think there was also a, a fair assumption, and I've heard aquatics mentioned 100 times tonight, and I know a number of you have indicated strong support for an aquatic component, with the hope that it could be a part of this. And I've seen slides, I've heard comments, I've heard references to it, probably more than even the sports complex. And where I'm going with this is, I think voters also had that understanding that aquatics would be part of this. The ballot language itself may not have specifically mentioned it, but I think that's the expectation that that would occur. The second part, it was included in the master plan, and so it gave reassurance that that would happen as well. When I look at the council memo, it says that the application proposed included major components that would be the aquatics, but then it goes on to say that the application of the plan, except for the Aquatic Center. So I, I just think from a voter's standpoint, integrity of election, it was sur, sur, well, not surprisingly, but astoundingly supported, had that expectation. And yet, I think if this comes forward a week from now and you approve it and it doesn't include that in there, I don't think we'll ever have that opportunity. I'm just shooting you straight. And I don't know exactly what the cost is, but when I reach out to the Carney YMCA, and they have a 3,000 square foot pool, it's not an aquatic center, but it's, well, in fact, I think every city of the first class has a better pool, better aquatic center, and that's no disrespect to the Y and Mr. O'Neill's leadership and others there. That facility's 50 years old. And our community has changed where, even if it was a pristine aquatic center there, it's, it's probably in the wrong part of our community to attract visitors more so, and that's just my feeling. So where I'm going with that is, and I think we, you all, I think the community deserves an action plan. If indeed this application does not include a pool or aquatic center, well, then let's have an action plan to figure out how we do that and where it goes. But I think the earmark, and it's reassuring once again from Mr. Snyder and the components here, when they say there's, there's an allowance, it's a public-private partnership, so that's, I mean, it's a win-win deal that everybody can agree on. There's space allotted for it, but if it's not built, you know what's going to happen, it'll never happen. And I have attended a lot of basketball games in, not so much volleyball, basketball in Lincoln and Omaha, and they're all great facilities, but I don't think a one of them yet has enough parking yet. People are still parking wherever they can find- People are still parking wherever they can find a place to park. So not to be short-sighted, there's a lot of great things in this plan, but if we, if we don't move forward with the application for aquatics, I think it will be lost unless there's an action plan to do it there with that allowance or some negotiated settlement that you folks can agree to with the proposals before you. Now, the second part, I don't know if the application itself, well, I believe it references tax increment financing of $52 million. And even though that would not occur under Phase One, aquatics is in Phase One. But I don't know how you would necessarily approve the application for tax increment financing before it's been approved. And we can look back in the last several years where there's been one or two occasions where TIF was not approved because they already had financing lined up. But what we're going with this is this application almost assumes it's going to occur. And I don't know how a week from now you could potentially, boy, you need to, I think you need to address it, if I'm not mistaken. Finally, this is a Wednesday night council meeting. It's a big project and it's not the city's fault, but in my estimation, the news media in our community is, does not give enough advance publicity or awareness of meetings in advance of their occurrence. Might get a bit of what occurred, but there's really hardly any advance notice to attend. And when Jill asked would I like to, to speak, well, it did occur to me, maybe just to leave because by the time you sit through three hours of meetings, it, it's tiring. And with that, I would just like to say thank you once again to your leadership, to be here and go ahead and make a sound decision on the, the best interest of our community and what people expect and what we would hope to attain in the near future, let alone 30 years from now. Thank you, Mayor Steele, for your outstanding leadership as well. Patrick Brown, good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eric Hansen.
Yes, thank you. My name's Derek Hansen. I have been, I was on the Heartland Football Club Board, which is a soccer board here in Grand Island for eight years. I served as the rec representative. I've served as vice president, president, and past president. You know, there's obviously been a lot of talk about all the other things that have been going on with this. One of the things that we haven't stressed a lot about has been the soccer options, which is kind of interesting because soccer is the only thing that's out there right now. I will say to start off, I appreciate, you know, Chad, Woodsonia, the council for the understanding and sensitivity to the relocation of the soccer fields. Obviously, we have 400 to 450 kids and their families out there for eight weeks in the fall, eight weeks in the spring for games, practices, all that goes on. So certainly appreciate the desire to at least not be affected because there's nowhere else for us to go. I do want to cut, touch on a couple of things with the soccer first. No hard feelings or anything towards Mr. Holon here, but I do want to, do want to make one correction from Councilman Nickerson's, I believe, question. If, on the field there, where the soccer fields currently are located is smack dab where the aquatic center and the fitness center is right now. So if there's some type of staging area or something, obviously that's where the soccer field is to the north and to the east. So I just wanted to, you know, there's a lot of information there. I just wanted to correct that question that was asked at the time. I don't know if it was November 23 or whenever Councilman Sheard, I know we were at the Woodsonia and Confluence initial presentation. I'm just apologize if any of you guys were there. I probably mainly remember Councilman Sheard because of our hairstyle selection. So back then, I stood up and I said, in the current grass fields, there's not enough. Looking at this presentation, there's not enough. I believe they would say that there was 12 and a half acres out there right now for soccer fields and that there's 14 now. That's for the grass fields. That's, you know, an improvement, but that's one soccer field. And we, HFC has been out at that complex for 12 years now. So we kind, and, you know, in the last five, six, we've been able to work with the city to actually go out there and practice. And over all those years, we're on top of each other. We're probably out there 50 hours a week, Monday through Friday. And we still don't have enough time slots to schedule practices for our 40-plus recreational teams, our six-to-10 competitive teams. So like, I would like to have some type of consideration made, some amendment made that we need, and we're one of four clubs in Grand Island and we're the only one out there that was out there this last fall. Previous seasons, there's been up to three clubs out there. And so if we're already on top of each other, getting this increase and this notoriety of this complex is only going to increase the interest. And we don't have enough room as it is. I know that probably some of the thought has been well, the turf fields. It's a consideration, but the turf fields aren't always going to be soccer. You know, they've got to be strived for softball, they've got to be strived for baseball, they, you know, I mean, I highly doubt these are going to be stitched turf fields. I mean, you're not going to have a stiff, stitched turf field for soccer and baseball and football and all that stuff, but regardless. The problem is, is that as, you know, you guys have heard from Confluence mini sessions about the price sensitivity of Grand Island. And I think it's like page 221 in your packet, I didn't look through it all, but roughly estimated. I know these are projections, these are estimates. But on that estimation, it was $75 an hour to rent a field for the turf fields. If we applied that to our, just our competitive teams only, we're talking over $20,000 in additional overhead that has to be passed on to the families of Grand Island. That's not going to work. We cannot, you cannot go into this thinking that we're going to be able to use the turf fields in a proper way. We're going to have to pay fees. We get it. We understand that. We've had a great contract with, over the years with the city where we go out and maintain the fields. We paint the fields, we do all that, and we just pay setup fields. We understand that's going to change. But the price, you, you can't overly rely on people wanting to use that turf field recreationally for $75 an hour. Again, I know those are just projections, but it's all I got. The other, so the reallocation, that's great, we appreciate it, but more space might be needed. And I don't know where you're going to find that space according to this plan. It's, or what you do. I, we had, this plan, I don't even think includes the grading that has to be done off Broadwell. So that's even less area that originally, I don't like to say, does this have the grading in there at all? That's got to be done off Broadwell?
The grade separation.
Yeah, the grade separation.
This plan, as it is shown, has four fields that are right along Broadwell
Right.
that need to come off.
So you, but you didn't.
But the rest is still more space. They showed these with the intent that at some point, the grade separation would go in and those fields would go away. My recommendation at the very beginning of this was let's take those fields off, let's not show them there, let's treat it as open green space that could be set up as practice fields, as something of that nature, but is not shown and, and expected that they're going to stay there. But the reality is that a grade separation at Broadwell and BNSF is probably 13, 15 years away, Keith. So you get 10 years of use out of it as open green space and managed grass, but not the, this is going to be soccer fields forever.
So as, obviously that's going to have a huge impact on our recreational side of things because, you know, Saturdays are fine. We can, if we have to schedule games for six hours because of less, less fields, okay, fine, whatever. But it's the practice, it's the flexibility of it. Obviously, you're condensing how many fields you have, that's more wear and tear. We're already kicked off in, you know, other competitive clubs get to start practicing in like March. They get to continue to park, practice in September, October. Because of the use, the city kicks us off, which already puts us at a disadvantage to many other competitive teams around the area. So we need more space for the soccer fields and the turf is not going to provide an adequate solution for that. The final thing I wanted to make is, if you look on page 356 of your packet, you'll see a list of the current soccer field complexes in Nebraska and other surrounding communities. And I want you to pay note to how many fields are in each of those complexes. There's only one, which is brand new in Valley, Nebraska, that has less than 10 of their multipurpose use fields. Pinnacle's own study suggested to have eight to 12 multipurpose fields out there. But the project overview just has room for six. Things don't match up there. You have Nebraska State Soccer, who hosts five to six tournaments a year in Nebraska. They're quoted on pages 371 and 372 that eight fields would be a good start. Their, the plan right now has six on that multipurpose turf. And they're, and their court even is saying to secure a site, they want eight. So they're not going to want to meddle with half turf, half grass for guarantees. So when it comes to even more expenses and planning area, I strongly can suggest that you look into, especially Nebraska State Soccer's quote, that they want eight as a starting point. Otherwise, you're handicapping Grand Island tourism from being able to recruit tournaments, even in our own state. They, they can't do it because they want eight as a starting point. And so, yeah, you, you have those, Pinnacle study says it, Nebraska State Soccer says it. And I just don't want to see this opportunity slip away because we didn't listen to what people are telling us. And I haven't heard a lot of people talking about soccer. It's fine, you know, it's why I'm here to hopefully address, bring the presentation or bring it there. And I believe that's all I got. So I appreciate your guys' time and thank you for letting me speak.
I don't know if you folks from Woodsonia want to respond on the soccer issue?
Yeah, I, I think the only thing we can say is we're more than replacing the existing fields, right? We don't want to take away from them. Not counting the Broadwell excess right away, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 fields. So, and those are not included in our programming. We're going to continue to let them operate on those. I mean, they're the city's fields, they can decide, but continue to operate the way they are. And again, this was the plan that, I think Confluence did take in a lot of this input, right, that they came up with. So that, that's, I guess that's kind of what our short position would be, Mayor.
Thank you.
I just, I know we're running really long, so, but Jack, back to your, back to your question, I just want to mention four things. I'll make this really brief, but I was sitting here just kind of collecting my thoughts after our three-hour-plus meeting. Couple of thoughts for council. Would the council consider electing an aquatics contact person for us? I'm looking at Ryan here. But that way we have somebody we can work with on programming, we can work with our consultant. I think we're going to be in a position, hopefully, to come back December 2nd. And so, so we're coming back with more specifics and we get more granular. What does council think about electing somebody on council that we can work with so we have a direct dialogue? So anyway, that's, you guys think about that. Enhancing funding? There's ways to enhance the funding, okay? That could take some creative financing, that could include asking the city to maybe consider backing the TIF. There's different things that we could think about and come up with. So would the council be agreeable if we spent considerable time, which we already will with staff, but your, your underwriter, DA Davidson, and then Mike Rogers? Those are really the people we need to get in the room. Obviously, Pat Brown needs to be a part of that as well, but those are where some of these ideas, I think, will be able to take shape to figure out how do we get more, can we get more than $95 million? And what does that look like? And what does the risk profile look like to the city? So I'm asking, that's another comment I have that I would like council to consider. And then we'd like to come back, Jack, to your question, next steps. We want to work through the, the funding issues, the aquatics issues, the Good Life funding allocation issues, and come back before council with an MOU on December 2nd. I don't think, I don't think next week's reasonable. That's probably not reasonable, so.
That MOU, though, just so we're clear on that, would be probably a four-to-six-page document, maybe shorter, that just lays out the key terms that we're agreeing to, that then we would go build the framework of a redevelopment contract on, which we would hope to do within.
It's already 75% done, to be honest. This got started last summer, so.
Mr. Nabadi.
I was just going to say I agree that December 2nd is probably the, the next logical date that we could have something before council. And it would be that MOU. That MOU is the first decision in a whole string of decisions that will happen over the course of the next several years. So it's not the be-all, end-all, but it is a roadmap for how we get to the endpoint.
I have a question for legal. I mean, the vision and perhaps the excitement we have tonight may change in five or seven or 15 years. This is a 30-year project. When you talk about a single transfer of land with clawbacks, are you confident we can draft something that does not take us into litigation to try to get our land back?
To give you the best lawyer answer, it depends. I, I think we definitely have the framework to start those discussions and look at exactly how those would work in a large-scale real estate transaction. Are they guaranteed? No. Is it an absolute bar? No. But it gives us some framework to start those discussions.
And I, I guess I would just say this to you gentlemen from Woodsonia. You heard a lot tonight and I also want to recognize that these negotiations have gone on for months because you submitted your original application November 4, 2024. Then we had several months of negotiations and then the legislature changed the rules of the game. And so you submitted your amended application June 4 of this year. And we've had several months of negotiations. And you heard the concerns of the council tonight. And I would ask that when you come back on December 2, you bring your best and final proposal, because there has to be an end to negotiations. And I would ask that you take what was said tonight by the council in good faith, try to meet the council's desires where you can, but if you can't, say so forthrightly and bring your best and final proposal so that we can get to a place where we can then enter into a memorandum of understanding, a memorandum where, where we, as has been stated, set forth a framework that will guide us over the course of the next several months and perhaps several Because otherwise, we'll just have meetings, and you've been in a lot of those, with the city.
We're having fun.
Where it's just back and forth and back and forth, and can you do this and can you do that? So I think, I think the council needs to hear from you where you can give and where you cannot, and then we can do an up or down vote, one way or another.
Totally agree with you, Mayor. The only thing I would say is, and again, back to my original comment, appreciate everyone's patience, that we got the, we got the rules of the game changed on us midway through this, of no fault of the city's, of no fault of ours. Let's just not have that happen again going into 2026's legislative session. I don't know what's going to happen. It's an unknown, but we just, that's why we're having so many meetings, because we, when the rules of the game change by no fault of any of us, it just makes things more complicated. So that's my only ask. And that's why I think all of us hopefully have time is of the essence of let's move this thing forward so we don't encounter those issues again, so, anyway.
I think I speak for everyone. I appreciate the thoroughness of your preparation and I appreciate all the experts you brought with you tonight. you brought with you tonight to make this more easily understandable. I think we have completed our agenda. Thanks again. We are adjourned.